Well, welcome me all here tonight. We're having an early meeting, we're starting early tonight so we can try to get through it before it gets too late. We combined the first of the month meeting with the evening meeting, so it was during the holiday season, 4th of July, so that's why we're here tonight. First, tonight, we'll ask Commissioner Jordan if he'll lead us in a prayer and pledge allegiance.
All right. Father Lord, we thank you for blessing us to be able to come out this evening to conduct the business of the county. Lord, we thank you for all your grace, mercy, and blessings and how you keep us. Lord, we ask you to give us the wisdom and understanding to conduct this business this evening for the betterment of the community. We thank you, Lord, for all you do. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which we stand, one nation, ungod, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
All right, we'll call this meeting to order now. First, on the agenda, it's gonna be the approval of the agenda. We've got a couple of changes we need to, gentlemen. If you go down at the bottom on the new business, Neil Wiggins has a presentation coming for us on jewelry software. We're gonna move that up to just below the systems comments above the department reports. Also, underneath Morgan Jethro 7, there'll be a number 8, where she'll talk about scatter site rehab, CDGB. Okay, we're also gonna move the Personnel Board Recommendations up to the Department Reports under Sandy Pittman, the number 3. Any questions? If not, we'll entertain a motion to accept the agenda as amended.
Second?
Motion is second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. All right, next on the agenda will be the approval of the minutes. Gentlemen, you have a copy of the minutes for the last meetings. Are there any questions or anything needs to be changed?
I think we need to make, Mr. Chairman, we need to make that in addition on page 1085. And the, about the middle of the page where it says, Commissioner Jordan made a motion to waive the liquid tax requirement for permitting for four residents who have been awarded housing grants. Commissioner Jernigan, second to motion, motion carried without opposition. I think we need to add, and we said that in the meeting, however, this does not prevent county foreclosure in cases where it exceeds the required limits.
If not, we'll entertain a motion to accept the minutes as amended.
Sub move? Second?
Motion is second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. All right, now, next on here, we've got the systems comments. Yeah, I've got that right here. All right, first one on the agenda, Ms. Ann Howell. Welcome, Ms. Howell.
Thank you. I'm Ann Howell from Yewa. My husband and I are lucky enough to be able to go to Florida and spend the winter. We have been doing this for years now. We pay our water bill, sometimes I pay the full water bill before we leave, if not, the bill is sent to me and I pay the water and the trash bill. When I got home this year, I called to see if there was anything like a vacation plan. There's not a drop of water used, there's not a piece of trash carried to the trash dump for that five and a half month period, usually from the middle of November until the end of April. And when I called the water department and asked, I was told that there was no plan such as this. I could turn, have the water turned off and have it turned back on for a $25 fee, which would save me $25. But when I questioned about the trash, I was told that that had to be paid. Now, I could pay it by the quarter, but it was still $15 a month regardless of when I paid it. And I just wondered if there was anything that might could be done. I've talked with a couple of the commissioners and they knew the same thing that I was told, but they said that in the past, said that was the way it was, the policy was written, but the policy had been changed in times past. I just wondered if there was anything that might could be done. I don't feel like that we're the only ones that are gone for a period of time and leave everything as it is. We have to pay our telephone bill because we have a security system which would alert the sheriff's department, but otherwise, there is absolutely nothing at home during that five and a half month period.
It's a good question, a good thought. I had no, I have enough thought but for. I'm sure there could be some discussion on that, though.
Well, at this time-
I know, policy's what it is right now, but it could, it's possible it could be changed.
Every dollar counts. We try to save every way we can, and when you write that check out knowing that there's nothing being used, it's kinda hard. So, I would appreciate any consideration that you might could give them.
Okay. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
All right, next on the agenda, I mean, on the comments, Mr. Thomas Hill.
Hello, Thomas, how are you today?
Ladies and gentlemen, county manager, county commissioners, I was presented in a fear from the, from some of the residents here in Gates County. They said that when they went to Pascatank County, there were books from the Gates County Library that was being sold, and I wanted to see it for myself. I wanted to take pictures, and so I did. If I could, I could let the camera get a close-up right over here. These books right here are from the Gates County Library, given to the Pascatank thrift store in the Salvation Army. Now, I know, gentlemen, with 1.5 million for this new library, surely, we're not gonna pay for new books. Obviously, here's the picture of the thrift store that I went to for the, for the Salvation Army store, the thrift store. You can see with the pictures that has the Gates County Library blotted out in red, and I know, gentlemen, surely, this county is not going to spend for a new library when we're taking books and selling them for 10 cents apiece in Pascatank County. Now, if these books are old and just raggedy, surely, we could give them to a thrift store right here in Gates County. There's one right there in Core Peak. This one is brand-new, and I bought it for a dime. So, gentlemen, this right here is what our tax money is worth, is a dime? Surely, gentlemen, this is not the answer to a new library. I would present to you all that we would need something more than just a new library. I would suggest that we have a grocery store. Mr. Jordan, you personally, I came to you last month on the 6th of June. I remember it well, it was my birthday, and I came to you asking for a debate. You have scurried from the issue, and so I bring the debate to you, sir. What say you with these books?
Well, first of all, we have to find out, you know, how they got there and just hear what the librarian had to say, but, you know-
Henry, let me, one question on this. The books actually belong to the Alamo Regional Library? They don't belong to the Gates County-
That is incorrect, sir. The pictures that I have-
They, they, all the books belong to the Alamo Regional Library. The library is one group, not just, the books rotate around from library to library.
Well, it says right here, sir, that belongs to the Gates County Public Library, right there.
Did you contact, did you contact the library and ask them about it? No.
I did ask.
What did they tell you?
And it goes to a general location, but surely, the tax money that we're paying for, and even as a renter, it comes out of my rent check-
Okay.
-that we pay for taxes. So, I'm asking Commissioner Jordan what he thinks of the issue, and I'm sure that Commissioner Jordan can speak for himself, but-
Would you like to answer this, Henry?
Yeah, I'm, I'll answer it. First of all-
Yes, sir.
We have to look into this, and, you know, this seems to be an issue that you want to bring public and to try to raise all angles that may be not the way it should be as far as acceptance by the public. And I don't think this is, first of all, is the place to do that. We've gone through a procedure, I'm gonna repeat this again.
Sure.
I've said it before, we've gone through a procedure to build a library.
Sure.
And it was the desire of the board as a majority to do that.
With you yourself voting for the 1.5 million, that is correct.
No, I did not vote for it.
You did vote for the 1.5 million.
Thomas, so you, gentlemen, we're not gonna have a debate here. This is a public comment-
Yes, sir.
-issue. I'm not gonna have a debate here.
I understand, yes, sir.
Let me finish, Mr. Chairman, if you will. It has gone through the process, and I'll say this, I did vote for the 1.5 million dollars, but I did not vote for the library.
That is correct, yes, sir.
Okay, now, that's an act of-
Yes, sir, we are in agreement with that.
So, to continue to bring this issue up is, you know, it shows that, that you're really not having the concern of the people in your best interest, because it's a moot issue. Library is done.
If it was a moot issue, sir, the residents of Gates County would not have presented this to me, and I hadn't checked it out.
Okay, this is finished. Mr. Hill, we're through, thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
All right, next on the agenda, next on-
I would ask for one last comment, gentlemen.
Yes, sir, one last comment.
One last comment. If the Gates County Commissioners is gonna allow five minutes for a citizen to speak, I would ask for the full five minutes. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
All right, next on, Mr. Juanita Spruul.
Hi, good afternoon.
Hello, Juanita, how you doing?
I'm all right. I've come before you, gentlemen, to ask if I could get some of your help. For two years now, I have tried, I have tried to put my child on a 10-acre piece of parcel that I had surveyed by Mr. Billy Felton. My husband brought the plat down here to Morgan Jethro, which she kept for a year. I finally called her up and asked her for it, and she had to look for it and find it. I live on Little Island Road. I own a business on 13, which is going to be hurt by the 13 project going on. My daughter lives in the house behind the store, and they want me, they're gonna take my gas pumps, they're going to, they want me to relocate my gas pumps on the right side of my store, which will be right in front of the home where my daughter and her two children are living. So, I'm asking y'all very nicely if you could please help me get my child put on this 10-acre parcel. There's no other homes on it, there's never been a home on it, and I've been told I could have no single wides and no double wides. She is 22-years-old, she cannot afford a modular, if she could, she would have it there, or a stick-built. If one of you gentlemen would like to buy her one, I'm all game, but I can't. But I go around the county, first, I go around the county, and I take pictures of mobile homes that we're not supposed to have in this county. Right across the street from Lilly International, there is a single-wide trailer. It's on one acre of land. Half of it houses this trailer, half of the acre houses a house. That shouldn't be right, it's supposed to be one home per one lot. There is a single wide right after I talked to Morgan Jethro that was put up in Reduka. No single wides. There was a double wide torn down on Barfield Road. I was also told you could not downgrade. The double wide belonged to a drug mule. Now, we have a single wide for the drug mule to keep doing his business. I'm just wanting to know, could you gentlemen tell me what I have to do to get my daughter that has two children on a 10-acre piece of parcel that I own, I pay taxes on? I don't know what to do. I need your help.
Morgan, come up here a minute.
Those are all replacements.
Come up here.
Those are all replacements which you've all changed, I believe it was less than a year ago. Remember, we made that ruling where if there had been a single wide or double wide in that location, then you could put one back irregardless of square footage, absentee or decently. So, they have since changed in the last two years that I've spoken with you. So, those are-
What about her, her issue? The trailers, they're, they're not, her issue's the one that worries me.
Hers is that hers is all zoned, all those parcels are zoned, all the ones.
Can they be unzoned, or can they be rezoned?
Well, see, my problem is, I'd-
Let me finish, Thomas. What was the, what's the process about getting a rezone on it, or is it possible?
It would be a, you had to do at least one parcel for the $600 fee a piece.
Is the whole, is the whole, is the whole 10 acres she got zoned R1?
Yes, there's, there's one 10 acre, and there's another one below it, and there's another parcel above it, and they're all zoned R1.
I have 23.23 acres, and then I also have a 2-acre lot that I purchased after. So, the 2-acre lot should have nothing to do with the 23.23 acres.
My question of this is, why are they actually R1s if it's, and most of it is wooded? Is that not correctly?
Yes, sir. All of it is wooded except for where me and my two sons live.
And which parcel do you wanna put the trailer on?
It's, I, I had Billy Felton survey an extra 10-acre parcel because I was told it had to be surveyed. I was told by one commissioner that I needed to go down my road and count how many trailers were on the road. I did. I counted 23. Mr. Dan Bazemore told me, no, ma'am, there's 25. Then I was told I need to ask all my neighbors what they thought. I did. My neighbors told me they didn't care, it's my land. It's not even gonna be roadfront where you're not, you're not even gonna be able to see it.
Well, I think that we can get homestead exemption on 10 acres or more for agriculture and whatever. Is there a limit to the number of acres you can have before it's, it's agricultural?
The homes are exempt, that's, that's what the tax department feels like, but that does not affect the zone, the zoning stays the same.
What I'm getting to is that if you've got 23 acres, it would appear that it possibly could be zoned agricultural.
Any over 10?
Anything over 10, but you saying you got 23?
23.23.
And it's been divided up into two, 10-acre lots and a 2-acre lot?
Right now, I have, I live on, it's, y'all can't see my land because the gate is locked. I don't own a gate, so I don't know where they went.
Ever done, it didn't go there.
You're right. I don't have a gate, I don't have a fence, so I have no idea where they went, but my gate was locked. I was, I live on the very back piece of land in my double wide. In front of me down my driveway is a, my son that has a single wide, and then on the front piece of land is the two acres that I purchased separately that has a single wide, and I still have all the other wooded area that has never been cut or anything.
Yeah, if it's zoned agricultural-
Well, it's not, that's the problem, it's not, that's, well, it wasn't, it should've been.
Well, yeah, it's not normal, normal that we zone full 23 acres agricultural, I mean, residential.
Well, I was told that, someone asked that they zoned it R, RHM1, and they told them no.
What, what is the problem? I'd like to take a look at it.
You're welcome to my home anytime, just watch out for my locked gate.
No, I mean, I, I can take a look at it on GIS.
I went by that after we talked a few months ago, I went by to look at it.
I mean, I don't, I'm not asking, I don't want, when I purchased the land, the lady I purchased it from said, please don't make a trailer park, and my comment was, I have four children. All I want is all four of my children to have a piece of my land that they can live on before I leave this world.
Well, I think what we need to do is, as commissioners, take a look at what the size of the land is, the layout, what, what is on each side of the property, and then we can better talk, 'cause right now, you know, we haven't seen anything, and-
I have an aerial map of it.
We can get that on, on GIS.
Mr. Chairman, it sounds like what we have is just a matter of being brought to our attention that, that needs to be reviewed.
Yeah.
So, if you would get with, with the clerk, with Diane, and give her the, the exact parcel that we're referring to, and, Mr. Chairman, maybe you can, can meet with Morgan-
Yeah, we'll gather up some more, I need, I've looked at it before, and I just don't-
But I have come to y'all's attention, not all of y'all. I have spoken to two of y'all. The other night, I called another one, I was so upset. I got a letter that was addressed to Juanita Spruul. The letterhead said, Juanita Spruul. I opened it up, and it says, Dear Ms. Miller. That's what I said, too.
Yeah.
But, but, I'd like to take a look at it on the GIS.
Let us look at it, and, oh, I'll call you myself.
Please do. I'll give you every phone number I have.
Will, I'll come see you, you'll be at the store, I'll run, next week, we'll look at it. We'll try to find some more information.
Well, I'll give you every number I have, 'cause I'd be-
Right now, I think the zoning, the zoning issue is the issue that we, that I was trying to get addressed for last year, but I didn't get much help with that.
I wanna get my child off of a four-lane highway.
Okay.
I mean, they're already gonna cut my business in half.
Yeah, I understand that. All right, let me, let me get back with you next week, I'm gonna talk with her, and see if we can find some kind of answers and direction.
Thank you very much.
I'd like to make a comment on this, being I'm the joint landlord.
Go ahead.
I am the major joint landlord of the property, my daughter and I, she owns a piece that's on their property, and I own the rest all the way to the back part of their property. And this lady has really got a hardship. She didn't mention it, some people, they're, they're pride, but sometimes we have to suck our pride and bring it out. She's got a hardship that she's existing with right now on her daughter. And as far as me being the landlord, I have no problem whatsoever with her putting a single wide trailer back down that lane.
Thank you, Dan. Well, let me get with Morgan, this, and we'll talk again this, this week, end of the week. Morgan, I'll talk to you more. Next on the list is Sidney Pierce. Sidney, Sidney, before you start, and Thomas, as chairman of the Board of Commissioners, until December, we will not be doing political debates on, in, in the meetings. If y'all will have questions, I will, it's not a problem, but we're not gonna do political debates every meeting between now and the election. That is, that is my prerogative. Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Well, good evening, commissioners. I am Sidney Pierce, the Republican candidate for the Hazel District, and I'm just here today to talk about my issues in regards to the old courthouse and to another historic site. The problem with the old courthouse right now is that it is in great disrepair. A lot of money is needed to repair and fully restore the old courthouse. A lot of money that the county just doesn't have at this moment. What I believe the county should do is we should go to the state government to try and get them to take over the property and try and let them fully restore and fully preserve it. The reason why I say it is because the state has vastly more resources than the county has, and for that reason, I believe they're in a far, very better position to take care of it than the county is. I've even talked to Ms. Edith Siling and several other citizens in the county, and they have all expressed interest in my idea. I believe that we should at least try to go forward with it. I mean, there's no harm in at least trying. That is my idea that I am campaigning on. In regards to the, another historic site in the county, of what a lot of people in the county may not realize is that during the Civil War, a fort was built in the county in a northwestern part near the Virginia border alongside the Chowan River. You know, right now, if it was recreated and turned into a tourist site, it could generate revenue, money, and jobs to the county, but right now, it's not doing it. We're not fully utilizing the resources of our county, and what I believe we ought to do is do something similar along the lines of what we did with some of our school building. That is, we take the property, provided we own the property, put it on the market, try and get some investors to purchase it, recreate the fort, and turn it into a tourist site to hopefully create jobs, create some tax revenue, and bring in some money to the county. These are the issues that I'm running on as county commissioner, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Sidney.
Thanks, Sidney.
Ray?
Good evening, gentlemen, and ladies.
How you doing, Ray?
All you guys know me, I'm Ray Campbell, worked with the Sheriff's Office now for a year and a half. My concern is, we've got a patrol vehicle that needs to be replaced, and there's been a battle about this for probably a year. My understanding is now, we have a vehicle, but we can't get it completed because we don't have money.
That's not true, it's, it's been taken care of.
Okay. I just want to, want you guys to realize what I get into and strap into every night, and my life depends on my car. I got 145,000 miles on a patrol vehicle. That, that's just not the body and the motor, that's the steering and the suspension and everything that I depend on when I'm running high speed to get to you or get to anybody else in this county, and to save my life and not let me get killed. There's no excuse that it's taken this long to get another vehicle, absolutely none. It's been, I've been here a year and a half, and we've been trying to get a vehicle for a year. It doesn't make any sense to me.
I think there's a lot more that you don't know about on that, Ray.
Well, let me, let me tell you some more about my car.
Okay.
Now, the car, like I say, it's got that many miles on it, and I have no restraint for prison in the back of that car. There's nothing between them and me but thin air. I have no seatbelt, I have no door handles. So, as far as I'm concerned, the car is a big liability to me and the county. I transport prisons all the time, I transported two the last two nights.
Have you stated your concern to the sheriff?
The sheriff has done the best he could do with what he's got, and that's what I've got. I've got the best he can give me right now, in a car. We need a car, and we need it, namely. Makes no excuse we don't have one.
What's the, what's the issue with releasing the money?
Oh, then there is an issue with releasing the money.
Sandy, answer the question.
The equipment has been checked, it's been ready for the sheriff to tell us if the equipment's been installed, placed the check, everything's there, it's all been paid for. Car was purchased seven months ago. The findings say everything's been paid for, the tax has been paid for, the equipment has traded everything.
Well, I was told the holdup was, we took money out of the sheriff's budget, so we didn't have enough money to complete the car.
Sheriff?
Y'all remember, this is what I came to you all about last month, this move discussion on, and like I said, there was a take the money away from it. Hopefully, the money just put back in there. Right now, we're waiting on them to call, send them to the car. Hopefully, we'll be able to get here in the next few weeks. Also, Campbell is the one that's got to drive that car, gentlemen, that's the reason he's here.
Okay, I understand that, but this issue was taken care of last, last meeting, I believe.
It's like you said, it's taken us over a year to get a car, and he has the right to say his statement.
I don't have a problem with that, as long as he knows all the facts.
Yes, sir.
Just, just as long as y'all know, every night, I put my behind in that car.
And I appreciate, Ray, I do appreciate you doing the job.
Everybody in here depends on that car. Everybody in the whole county depends on that car, me getting that.
Yeah, I agree.
And as far as I'm concerned, you guys should go to him and ask him what he needs to make this county a better, safer place. But we, he shouldn't have to go beg for something. If he needs it and he asks for it, we obviously need it.
Okay, thank you, Ray.
Luther Yewa?
Good afternoon, gentlemen.
Good afternoon, Mr. Luther.
Don't have any criticisms of anybody?
Thank you.
But I saw in the paper two or three weeks ago, well, our water bill was gonna be increased by a dollar.
Yes, sir.
So, I got to think- So I got to thinking if we could look around and become a little more efficient. We, we might save the consumers and, and the water department some money. So I just came up with the idea that one way we could do that was, was to maybe have our meters read for the, for the participants. Participants that wanted to be included in this. That meter would be read one time a year. They would pay their bill monthly based on the past usages, average, average usage. In other words, if they, if they averaged out thirty dollars a month, they would pay thirty dollars for eleven months. And, and then the twelfth month, it would be a settling uptime. This would, the, the meter reading, I just estimated, and I don't have any, any figures from, from the water department. Because I didn't think they would, probably didn't think it was into my business. But I, I just estimated that it would take a meter reader an hour to read six meters, that would be ten minutes a meter. All this time, the pickup is running. And, and then if, if, I don't know how many consumers we have, any kind of water consumers. If we had a thousand, and, and five hundred of those would participate, it would be a savings of eighty-three hours a month. And if, if the meter reader got eight dollars a month, eight dollars an hour, that would save six hundred and sixty-four dollars. Which don't sound like a whole lot, but if you put it a little bit here and there, and I didn't count gas in, this is just labor bill. And, and I didn't count the wear and tear on the pickup. And, and past these savings, along to the consumer, the participants maybe would, you could, you could deduct from their bill maybe five percent. And, and the water department would still come out about three hundred dollars a month, if only five hundred, if, if you had a thousand participants, consumers. Just wanted to add to.
Do we have an average, average billing or something like that?
No. Okay. I know, a lot of utilities do average billing, the electric company and all do average billing like that. And you pay average bill for the year.
The, the consumer would be responsible for paying that bill on time like it is, and if it wasn't on time, they would pay a penalty. Be no change there, it was, they would just have eleven months same payment and settling up twelve months. Which would be, it would be a pretty big savings if you, if you had five hundred. I thank you all for listening.
Thank you, Mr. Luther. All right, I've got one more gentleman, a letter to come to the commissioners as a comment. This is from Mr. Anthony Felton, dated Ju- July sixteenth. First of all, first off, I'm sorry I could not be here at Gates County Commissioners Meeting due to my health problems. This past May was a close call with me, I ended up in the hospital due to complications that was caused by medical, medicine level and weight loss. If, if it wasn't for my family, relatives, and great Chowan Hospital, hospital staff, I wouldn't be here today. We need to move for, move ahead instead of backwards, even though I wasn't, at the last meeting, I was able to watch it on the Gates County site. We do not need to debate on the new library to come. All the debate is going to do is stir up a hornet's nest. In other words, it's going to cause a lot of people unhappy and angry. As a citizen and a customer of the library, I am awful to new library, there, there were ideas on where to put the library at. Even if you were used to an empty old building at Gates County Prison or closed down Family Food Store, it would cost more than a new one. The final decision and groundbreaking has been done, we need to move on. Hope I didn't step on, no one's toes by expressing my opinion on the library topic. If I did, I apologize, thank you and have a great day, hope to be back at the next meeting, Anthony Felton, you are no kidding. All right, let's take care of public comments. Next on the agenda, Nell, we'll move you up here unless you take care of your part and.
Good afternoon, I'm here to introduce Mr. Jack Berry. He's from Service Commander Software Incorporated, he is going to give us a short presentation about jury software that he has developed and is used in eighty-two of the one hundred counties in North Carolina. At this time, Gates County is the only county in North Carolina that is still doing every aspect of the jury process manually. The North Carolina general statutes in the process are being changed, and will delete all references to the manual operations and aspects of the jury process. I hope you will see from Mr. Berry's presentation what this program can do for us, as well as the time that it will save. Mr. Berry?
Thank you, welcome. How are you doing tonight?
Wonderfully, thanks, sir.
All right.
If we, I've, I've got a brief PowerPoint presentation to do, and I hope I'm not going to blind you there. Let me get it back here. We are really the new standard for jury software in North Carolina, due to the figures that Ms. Nell just told you. I want to talk to you tonight about what Service Commander can do for you, many people here in this county. And actually, I'm going to give you a chance to become heroes tonight. We save a lot of people time throughout the entire, the entire jury process. And let me just pause for a moment to say, we made a corporate decision about our software. The decision was, we're going to do software for North Carolina, it's developing in the North Carolina, for North Carolina, and we're going to do it right. Who do we help? You can see the list right there. Everybody from the top to, to, to the bottom of the chain of people who are involved in the jury process. We save you money in several ways, for one, we have the best pricing in the industry, we guarantee our prices for three years, we guarantee, in fact, that no price increase will ever, will ever be more than ten percent. There's no mainframe needed for this, it's done on a personal computer, a PC. What we do, and I demonstrated this to Ms. Nell and several interested people today, is the kind of control and visibility this gives them over the entire jury process. From forming the original jury pool through panel selection, how they handle excusals, deferrals, people with prior service, how they can put together grand juries, how we pay them without a keystroke. And how, how they can produce thank you letters as well. They have the ability to find any name on any panel in moments, they're just a couple clicks away from it at any time at all. If they run out of jurors in the final pool, that can happen to them, there's no problem, we can do an additional jury pool, if the jury commission needs to, just needs to come in and sprinkle holy water in, no problem. If they need to find out about a juror's deferral, a simple click gives them the answer, just like you can see down there at the bottom. We have a full audit trail on every action that ever happens in this system. A lot of software is pretty hard to, to understand, there are arcane codes, and you have to figure out how to use it. Ms. Nell, could you use it right now, having watched it demonstrated this afternoon? It's written with jury clerks in mind. Lots of jurors on the same day, may not happen here, happens, for instance, in Wake County that uses this, no problem at all. Right now, people keep a lot of information in the bottom drawer of their desk and scratch pads, those all go away, all the typing goes away. It's easy to learn, we've got point and click, and everything's done in Windows, it's very easy to use, if you can use the internet, you can use this. We have keyboard shortcuts, we have a very high-end barcode scanner, we have a training mode, instruction manual, piece of cake to learn how to use this. And this is what, exactly what Ms. Nell just discovered today, having seen the demonstration, she could use it right now, everything's intuitive. We have what we call instructions on the handle, and then, the best thing for you all is, we have what we call at-your-side service. We have the, we will have the ability to connect up to that jury computer from any place I am, other than Gates County, because we don't have very good telephone connection here. But from almost any place, I can connect up using this and my laptop and computer and work her screen as if I was sitting next to her. It's just amazing, so we can train as we go, check out any problems as we go, from any place that I am. Those are the kinds of controls we have, you look at them, you can understand what they'll do. The screens, very intuitive, and they also keep a total audit trail automatically, as a byproduct of what the jury clerk does. The information's there that they need, in case anybody ever challenges any part of the process, the answer's there. We, we keep the, the data safe, we detect and prevent any intrusion, and have the information she needs to start the search for the guilty if there has been any intrusion in the system. Financial management system, right now, her bookkeeper spends about three, three and a half hours every session of court, typing in manually from other printed lists, typing the information into the, the state financial management system. That, that three and a half hours changes to sixty seconds, we've got an automatic interface, interface for it. If you need it to, you can network the data throughout their, their office, they won't need that here, they just need one PC. And we provide, as part of what we do, we provide absolutely unlimited free service. That system handles every, all correspondence, from the summons to the thank you letter in seconds with no typing at all. No typing at all to process undeliverable summonses, excuses, paying the jurors, if there are no shows, you can, can do show cause orders or threatening letters, thank you letters, no typing, none. This is kind of time that this system will save. Ms. Nell put together a piece of paper that showed how much time they were using, every two, every two years, the people who are involved, the clerk of superior court, the jury commission, that totaled up to, she gave the, me the totals, and I gave her what amount of time it takes for ours. Every two years, we'll save a little more than fifty-one work hours from what they have to do today. Every session of court, looking at what we save all the people, we'll save a little bit more than seventeen work hours, every session of court. And we have eighty-two counties that will attest to the fact that's what happens. Why switch? We're the North Carolina statute, we sort of have you surrounded, all the green counties are counties that use Service Commander right now. And Curatech up there in the top right is about to get it. Every one of those counties is happy, we have never had a county leave Service Commander. We save you time, we save you money, we, Ms. Nell, real-time control over the entire jury process, so here's your chance to empower your staff with Service Commander. We let them work smarter, not harder, and let me talk about costs a minute. Here's the normal pricing, seventeen hundred dollars a year for the first computer, that's licensed to use our software. If there are additional computers, that's eight hundred dollars per additional computer, those prices include unlimited free telephone support and all upgrades. And the connectivity, we guaranteed those prices. And after three years, as you see in the, next to the bottom bullet, our prices are guaranteed not to increase more than ten percent, that's in our contract. And in addition to that, there's a five hundred dollar one-time cost per scanner, that's our standard pricing, that's what people have been paying. You're a small county, I understand that, these are tough times, so, I've got a one-time good deal for you. This one-time thing is, I'll offer this to you, twelve hundred dollars per year, I guarantee that for three years, plus in that twelve hundred dollars in this first year, if we can do it this year, when we're not in the middle of, of doing this big two-year push, where all the counties in, in the state have to compile brand-new lists, and it's hard for us to train. Will include a free scanner, which is normally five hundred dollar addition. Again, unlimited free telephone support, all upgrades, this at-your-side service, we also do first echelon information technology support, where I tell them, if they have a problem, call me first. I'll be able to tell, is it a computer problem, a software problem, a training problem? Only if it's a computer problem will we then contact the IT people, and I can tell them what's happening wrong. No price increase for three years, guaranteed minimum increases, and it has never been that much. May I answer any questions? Yes, sir.
Is this a sequel database or access database?
It's an access database.
Access database? How many data fields do we actually have?
Good gracious, I don't know, a lot of them.
Data fields and tables?
Yeah, it, it's all relational databases, and we have three, three different major databases with, with different, I've lost my word. Different tables within each one of the major databases, and it's a lot of fields.
So out of this, in the report section of the access, can you write your own ad hoc reports out of this?
I can if needed, but that's very rare, the only thing we've needed is, recently, there's been a push in several counties for people under the Freedom of Information Act to find out who has been deferred, excused from jury duty as being a non-citizen or being a felon. Now, those we do on an ad hoc basis, I do it for the counties, the people who get the information have to pay for it, that's been fifty dollars per report. That's the only ad hoc query we need, because this program is tremendously complete, it's written in Visual Basic, so you, there is no.
I understand.
Hands-on with Microsoft Access.
And so the query is, I can, I could run my own queries?
Ordinarily, you wouldn't have, have access, and, and I wouldn't, I wouldn't recommend it.
So you're using, I guess, like dashboard for these, the buttons that you have, that you were asking to?
Everything you're seeing there is done in Visual Basic, we use a Visual Basic front end for everything.
But the radio button or the, is linked to generate those reports?
Yes, it is.
Okay, all right, so, the, I guess, what you're telling me, that you would design the query and put the dashboard or the radio button?
We've done, every time we, we take on a new county, particularly those that have had a decent county level of support, we've got new ideas and we've added to the program, the program grows all the time with every new idea.
So.
But we keep it within the program itself, so it's easy to use, they can use it.
So what am I, I guess what I'm saying here, is if you design an ad hoc report, is that report generic to all customers?
Yes.
In other words, I could, because I guess, are they in a common database, all counties in a common database, or do you have a Gates County database?
Each county has its own database, and that's my statute, yeah.
Each county has its own table then.
That's right, and they all have their own data, they back it up, they're responsible for what they have, each county individually.
So all of this is web-based reporting on your client, basically?
No, the only, the only web part is for when I connect up to help them with any questions.
So the data is actually physically residing on the local computer?
Yes, it is.
Oh, okay, all right, that's what I.
No, I don't have it out there, so you don't have that, that possibility of injury from.
So in other words, if the internet's down, I'm still up and running?
Yes, sir, you are.
Okay, that's good, and tell me what the barcode scanner, what are you actually doing with that?
I, I, every, every document we produce has a barcode on there, which identifies that juror specifically from every other juror we've ever summoned. So by scanning that, we can go directly to their excuse, if an envelope is returned undeliverable, the barcode scan is, appears in the return address section, you scan it, you don't even open the envelope, and that person will never send, try to send anything to that person at that address again. In fact, if we get that person at that address from our DMV, where we get the data once every two years, we will not even present it to the jury commission.
Okay.
So the barcode just gives you direct for paying them, for excusing them, for doing no-shows, it gets you straight to that juror to do exactly the action you want to do without any typing.
So the name and address fields then, or they drop-down boxes so that there's no typing or?
You never have to do a thing with it, everything's pre-filled for you, right where it needs to be.
Well, the first time, when you're putting it in there, so you eliminate the duplication.
Actually, when it comes, what we do, we, we get the information from DMV, which combines licensed drivers and registered voters statewide, having, having removed the, the names of people who were.
who were deceased.
So basically, what you're saying is there's no really name input from our side? It's automatically out of their database?
The only time there would be any input would be if not enough jurors show up, the judge goes ballistic, says, send, send the sheriff out to the, to the Kmart and start bringing people in. And at that time, using the master database, that happens once in a while, with very, very few keystrokes, it just picks up the information from the master database and puts them in on, on the panel. Almost no typing at all.
Right, okay. Do you have this on the web where you can look at it?
I do not.
Okay.
May I answer any other questions?
I've got a couple if everybody else is done.
Yes, sir.
Two questions. When you gave your breakout of costs for the normal, you said 1750 for the first computer, 800 for each additional, but the blue light special, one-time only, $1,200, is that for the first computer or is that for all computers for the first year?
You're not going to need but one, that's for one computer, and you won't need but one.
And we'll only, we'll only need one, okay.
Yes.
So, so for $1,200, we're bound one software and one license?
Guaranteed for three years.
That price will remain at that price for, for three years. We only get one barcode scanner. That's first year.
Are you a single-source provider? Who's your competition? Who else out there does this?
There's a, there's a company in California that does it. There's one that just moved to Virginia from Hyde County. It used to be called Parker Low. All those other people have lost all their, their customers to me.
So, have we checked with anyone else? This is the only one we've checked with.
I have my list of families in Carolina that use software, and I have, every time I ask someone if they have any problems whatsoever, they all just go in and break them, because he's there by your side, the loan, he needs any help, or he goes wrong, he'll help you with it. We have the Biennium coming up next year. We'll have to redo our jury commission, they'll be getting their oath again next year, and they'll have to do the master list again. So, I'm hoping to get something in place.
Yeah, I'm, I guess, the thing about it is, if he's the only provider, you know, if something happened, where would we go to next? You know, but-
Well, we do have a continuity of operations plan for-
A lot of counties in trouble.
We do have a continuity of, of operations plan, and that's included in our contract to you.
Yeah.
Where, to, to make sure that you'll have satisfaction where you need it.
Just want to make sure that, you know, we-
That's a good question.
And, and all of cancer, and, and then like the doctor, I, I had him, there he come, probably 2002 or '03, I don't, maybe '03 or '04, 2003 or '04, and we just had a very small meeting at that time, and we've just never gotten this far, but, and, with the statute changing and everybody else's got software and you're doing everything manual from jury commission all the way down, I mean, he's talking about keeping it on legal pads, deferrals from jurors. I keep on legal pad in my drawer, and every time, it's kind of a journey, but everything is done manually. I mean, the pressure fees, prepares the wish, you type it up, we get back, we make the file, we give the sheriff's office, you type out the summary. All of this will be done if we can with the software.
Yeah.
In this particular branch, I've, I've been working in software since the mid-'60s.
If I may, gentlemen, just that just decked over, that's what you just said. We are one few counties in our state that still doesn't pay.
Only one. You're the only one.
That's what I'm saying. This is a chance for us to set the decision down.
Nell Rose, some people would prefer that as unique.
That's why I say, as you said, it's a, it's a pass-it-down, recede, clerk, sheriff office, and as you said, and I saw it from part of three stations, 16 seconds eliminates just about all of that.
Sheriff Webb, Ed, how, how much time would this save your office, your secretary?
Well, it's like I said, she's got to get it, and they got to run it, and we have to type up the letter, type the names in, then I put the codes on it, we get it mailed, it's a, it's a long run. In like three and a half, four hours, is my office alone, not the mayor's office.
For how many, for how many, just one or two, or, I mean?
That's one, one session.
One session of court.
One session of court.
Yeah.
It's just a chance for us, gentlemen, to make that lead into the future.
Mr. Berry.
The only one in the state right now is not doing it computer-generated.
Mr. Berry, I do have some appreciation for what you're doing, sir. I am quite familiar with Access and SQL databases and have done some of it, and as I told Nell, I could do a lot of the things that you're doing like that. But I also appreciate the fact of the time that it takes to put it together and maintain it.
That's one of the things we've found. I have a list that shows how many counties you, were doing it by, with county resources, and there are about 30 of the counties had their own IT department doing it. You can't support a single customer and do it well.
I agree.
By the fact we're, we're supporting 82 customers, we can do it right. We can, we can afford to invest the time to get it done right.
So, in the payment process of where you were talking about doing that, I guess what you do is generate a payment list that's turned over to the finance, and then you come back, you had to come back and, and inside the software and hit the check paid button? Or does-
Actually, what happens, we have to transmit a file that we've arranged the file structure to the state.
Right.
It comes back from the state in the, the financial management system that they use statewide. That comes back to her bookkeeper, who, all she has to click on is approved.
Okay.
And the next day, the checks are printed.
I understand.
She's, the bookkeeper's always the boss. She has to approve it.
So it's been reconciled out of the GL system rather than in your database?
That's correct.
Okay.
But it's done as a byproduct of what the jury clerk's doing anyhow.
Yeah, I got you.
You got more questions, I mean?
I have one last one. You talked about intrusion a little bit. If there was intrusion, where does that liability lie? Does that lie with the clerk of court, or does that lie with you and your program? Talk us through that a little bit.
It lies with the clerk of court. And we have, so far, only had, we've embarrassed some number of clerks who typed their name and password incorrectly, but one, one county found that there had been an intrusion attempt at 10 o'clock at night.
Right.
We had all the data they needed to start the search for the guilty.
Okay. So what, in that realm, where is the confidentiality aspect if this is off of DMV records as far as names and voter registration, which is public knowledge?
The, the confidentiality has just been increased one step with the new legislation, which has gone through the entire legislature. It's sitting on the governor's desk right now, has been for a week. And that, that started out as a privacy of juror information. They're going to make it so now they're defining the only releasable information is the juror's name. Right now, we can, we can release juror's name and address.
So what other kind of confidentiality information's in there? Would it actually be?
Well, we have name, address, driver's license number, social security number.
Okay, so the social, that's the problem.
Date of birth, yeah.
Well, that's in the voter registration thing.
That's all, that'd be, only be accessible by your office, by your office.
Social security number's the only thing that he said is truly confidentiality.
Well-
And driving license number.
Yeah, all I can speak to is what the legislation says.
Right.
Yeah, I've seen it, and I got Ms. Nell a, a copy of, of that in its present form as it's sitting on the governor's desk.
The other 81 counties?
Two.
Eighty-two? They're all serviced by your company?
Yes, sir. That's from Terrell County, which is the very smallest county in North Carolina, to Wake County, which is the second largest. And the one, oh, Mecklenburg, they have their own county system. If they haven't spent $500,000 on that, I'll eat my hat.
Well, and you're right, the larger counties can afford IT staff to write program and code and keep up with these things. Little counties cannot do that.
That's right.
Unless they're fortunate to have those people.
But I could sure save Mecklenburg County a whole lot of money.
Probably.
I, I just want to say this on behalf of Nell and, and the sheriff. The question I'm asking is, is not so much to discredit the need for the service. I'm all for it, and I want to go forward and get this service. But when we're procuring services as a, as a county, it is policy and even general statute that we make sure that we get the, the lowest bid and the best service. And if we've only got one provider, then we only have one place to go to. But if we got other people out there to provide the same service, I don't know, they may could do it, we might even get a better deal than this. But, you know, we don't know that. We, we don't know who's out there. You know, I'm willing to move forward with it, but certainly, I think that, you know, we should make sure that if there are competitors out there, that we need to know, need to know who they are and, you know, what the availability is, to show that we have done due diligence in, in obtaining services for the county, you know, as we spend these funds to go forward.
With the, Henry, do you know the general statute, the dollar amount that would require us to go?
This is under that.
Well, with this amount, it really doesn't even need the, the commissioner approval. I think we can go up to, what, $300,000?
You're well, well below even the informal range.
Yeah, but even in the informal range, you're supposed to-
I'm saying you're below the informal range. It's no bid needed, informal, formal, and you're in the no bid needed.
Right, but you do, do, do-
Yeah, I think you should do due diligence, correct.
Yeah, and making sure that, of the services.
Renee, you got something you'd like to say?
I don't think I would like to, but I don't think it all right, so I would for this to occur. But one of the companies that he did mention, one of our departments has utilized in prior years, and we went away from that person because of problems we were having. And I do know of other times that we looked at that same company and have chosen not to go in that direction because of issues.
Okay.
If, if we were to make a decision, the timeframe for getting everything implemented and up and running?
Tomorrow.
As soon as she gets a computer. And I would, I would send you an actual formal proposal, which I, I believe I'd send to you, Ms. Chapel. And, but it's a, or, or Ms. Nell, it will say exactly what I said here with the additional information about the continuity of operations. That's, that's quite specific and quite extensive.
Do you have it in your budget? Do you currently have it in your budget?
In my budget?
Yeah.
We don't have a budget.
She don't have a budget.
She's a state ace, she's a state.
She's a state office.
But they can only respond to this.
Sandy, well, how would this, if we, if we authorized this, how would this be funded?
It would be part of-
If you get one computer, it's $1,000 a year plus the, you said the $500 for this one, it's free.
That'll be included in there, in the 1,200.
When we get a jury commission, it's included in the, in the body?
Covered in the body.
So we would just include as part of your budget for handling that.
So, Mr. Berry?
Yes, sir.
One computer, one user license, but multiple users?
Absolutely.
How would the passwords, do you just put, no, well, she controls the user names in that?
They're, they're in control of that.
And one administrator for passwords, basically?
Actually, I have the administrative password that I can use to help them when things go a little wrong.
So you're using, I guess you're using like join me, log me in?
Something like that, yeah. It's a Citrix solution.
Right. I would-
I want to make it, is, we still have a jury commission, we still have these three people, but they'll be, they won't have to sit down with a stack of papers and deeds and go through 9,000 or something names. They can just, they'll, they'll look at the list like they always do and pull out, and they do that, they know what the seeds will move away. But it'll be a much shorter process.
And the list is about one-tenth as long as what they've been working with up to now. We'll pre-process that list. So what they have to work with, the big counties spend no time at all on lists.
Right.
The smaller counties spend a little bit extra time because you have more knowledge of the community.
Well, Mr. Berry.
Go ahead, John.
Go ahead. I want to hear what you got to say first.
I, I believe we're, we're chasing this thing.
I agree.
I believe we're unanimous and that we want to move forward on this. I appreciate Henry's watching the dollar. I really do appreciate that due diligence. When we're talking about $1,200, I think the time when we're chasing down the due diligence, you know, we could already have this thing up and running by the time we waited 30 days for somebody else to get us another proposal to be brought before us. So I'd like to see somebody make it.
And I also know from experience, I'm below anybody else's price that I've ever heard of.
Right. And I trust, I trust your 82 counties, your map up there showing, and Nell's response to that.
Eighty-two counties, I mean, six, four, five, six.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we move forward on this project.
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Oh, that was simple.
Where would you like me to send the proposal? I'll email it tomorrow.
Take, take your, yeah.
Will do.
Yeah, it's got to come, come to the county.
The person paying the bill.
Come to the county.
To the county, okay.
Toby Chapel.
And I'll, I'll get the, the right email address and, and I'd be happy to do that.
Okay. Let's take a quick break while he gets his-
Thank you, Mr. Berry.
Thank you.
Appreciate you coming.
Next on the agenda, Ms. Sandy Pittman, a finance officer.
Good evening.
Good morning, or evening.
Good morning, Graham.
Long day.
Yeah. Have some budget amendments to go over first. They're all pretty straightforward. Number three, we received about $500 at the end of last year in drug task force grant money for the sheriff. We need to pull that money. It rolled into fund balance because it wasn't spent. We received it too late in the year. We need to pull that money back out of fund balance and add it to the sheriff's drug enforcement budget. Number four, we budgeted last year for software upgrade for the water department. That has taken longer than we expected, has not been done. So we also would like to pull that money out of the fund balance, the water department fund balance, and appropriate it again this year to cover that software upgrade when it finally happens. Number five is to budget for grant money that REBA will be receiving this year. It was received after we did the final budget for this year. This is a grant that we've had for several years, but it's been refunded again this year. Number six is to budget for a new grant that REBA has received through the Albemarle Hospital Foundation Grant. I understand this is a heart, healthy, fitness program grant.
And Sandy, we're just, we're just administering six and five?
Yes. They're through cooperative extension, yes. And there is no county match. This is strictly grant funds that are coming in to be spent. That's correct. Number seven, this is a carryforward budget for money that has been received but needed to be budgeted to be spent this year, also for REBA. And this is also grant money. And that's all I have.
Any questions, gentlemen?
I had ones been answered.
Okay. If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the budget amendments that presented.
So move.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign.
Okay. Second on the agenda for me is the USDA loan refinance was brought up last month and was tabled, and I just need to know how you all would like for us to proceed with this.
What's the recommendation?
Recommendation is we refinance to a 15-year note.
And what is that based on, Sandy?
It's based on the information that I provided in the packets last month.
But-
Mark.
I don't want to do this one.
No, that's all I can say.
Okay. Well, the reason I asked is to be tabled is so I could go calculate the returns on the investment. And with the 10-year versus 15, 2.19 versus 2.19. And with the 10-year versus 15, 2.19 versus 2.89, it represents another $208,000, which is a 41.64% return on your money. I don't know of anyone out there. Matter of fact, very few people that are earning 42% on the money. Anyone doing that? The only possible way that you can actually do that is be in the market and you got to be very careful when you're doing that. This is a, a sure thing. And if you look at the proposal that Sandy had, which this represents like an additional about 50,000, well, it's 49,000. It's 79,000, $78,942 above where we are currently paying that. Well, in the current reserve, we got the $56,000 in the next five years or 30 years if we were to maintain it. And I think it's 10, I'm not sure. There would be another 11,235 that you would be required to budget and put in that reserve. Well, when you're looking at those things, the first year and the next 10 years, basically, there's 11,000.
That's for five more years.
That, okay, for the next five years. The other thing is, is our tax base went up 35, well, we generated roughly another $35,000 this year. With the Commerce Park, if you believe in what's happening out there, obviously, the state employees credit union is going to come about. I don't know what that building is, I'd say 2 million, 2.5 million. We're going to have the assisted living facility, and I think that's at $5 million. So when you start analyzing these things of what the money would generate, increase revenue stream, and then the savings is $208,000 additional at 41.64% return, I don't know how you can really not take advantage of saving the county $208,000. Now, is it a cash flow problem? Not really. Your net worth remains the same. If you're out there paying on your car and you paying additional money, you own more of the car. Same thing with the DSS building. We might pay an additional 49,000, but guess what? We own more of that building every time we do that. And would you, as an individual, if someone told you, if you buy five, I'll give you two free? Well, that's what this is a match to. You cannot afford to let opportunities go by. And this is what it amounts to. Now, there's a difference in 2.19% and 2.89%. This is the effective aspect of it. Now, if you look at it, yeah, you're spending $50,000 more above what you were planning on spending, but you would do on that asset. It's more of yours every time you do that. And our cash flow that we've had in the last several years supports that. It continues to support that at our tax rate that we have. So there's absolutely no way that I see that it makes sense to do anything but go for the gusto. The other thing that you had to remember in five years, and you look at the first five, five years from now, we're going to have this library paid for. That's what we did. That was one smart thing that was done. That was 1.77%. Very smart. Only going to cost about $85,000 in interest. Why is that? Because we're spending roughly $300,000 a year on the principal. Now, so year six, those $300,000 you're not going to spend. You've had your five. One of them's already paid for. They're sitting in a reserve fund. That's no longer required. There's no impact on the budget whatsoever other than a minimal amount if the tax revenue stream at the Commerce Park becomes true. And if we really believe it's going to do anything, then we're in the clear. And we're in the clear anyhow with our fund balance. I mean, we're setting 22, 23 to 26%. You cannot afford not to take advantage of opportunities. So I'm making a recommendation that we go for this 10 years and save the county $887,000 versus 679,000. It's just absolutely critical and imperative paying your debt down and saving the taxpayers' money.
On the, on the 10-year note, what was the increase? 78,000?
Yes.
On the 15-year, on the 15-year note, what was that increase?
41,000.
39,000?
Twenty-nine.
How many?
Twenty-nine, 29,000.
You're spending 49 and getting 20 back is what it amounts to.
Any comments from other commissioners?
I guess the only thing we, we really need to look at, and that's where we ask for your input, you and the county manager, is the fact that, you know, any time you're on a budget, you have to make sure that what you put out is not more than what you're bringing in. And, you know, it allows long-term financing allows you to do many times a lot of things. You can buy a house, you can buy a car because you financed it over a long period of time. You pay a little bit more money, but you are able to have more assets and, and more things that you want. Taking that additional $50,000 out of the budget per year, based on what we currently have obligated, how much will that affect us as far as allowing us to do some other things that we're trying to do? What do we currently have obligated and what do we foresee that this $50,000 extra is going to cause us not to have additional services or, or equipment or whatever that we want to, to purchase?
That would be up to you, you know, as y'all do the annual budget. We have the capital improvement plan in, in place, and every year the department heads come to us with their requests. I mean, you all would have to make that decision annually. And on the front end, we would have to have a repayment plan in place for the LGC. When we do the LGC paperwork, they want to see a repayment plan. If the payment is going to go up $80,000, they want to know where that money is going to come from. And they need, they need to know that if it's going to come from fund balance or what the repayment plan is. We will need to have that information in advance.
So if we do this tonight, we'd have to go into fund balance to do that?
No.
Or we can take it out of the reserve?
For the first year, we would be able to use the, the payment that we've already budgeted for 1213. For 1314, you could use the reserve and what you would normally budget for the reserve and have to add to it. And then the following year, you would have to come up with the entire payment.
The thing about it is, is as I just said, five years from now, we're going to gain $300,000, and we're sitting on $3 million. This is not a critical thing, that, that you would spend 250,000 in the next five years of and above. And then the very next year, you're going to get 300, plus the fact that you are actually saving 20 for the first five, which is another 100 grand.
The only real cash flow issue is that you've already obligated over $300,000 for the library payment. You've got about $200,000 for the sewer system. You've already said we would do about 150 for the tax software. That would be the concern is bringing the fund balance down for all those things and for this, and then trying to bring it back up. You know, it would really be a cash flow issue. But, I mean, this is your decision. I'm just providing you with all the information. That, that's what's out there.
To me, this is, this is very eerily similar to the conversation we had when we talked about the library financing. We talked about pay it off quicker, incur, you know, up to payment, up to payment, up to payment. And the problem is, okay, you've already obligated to do that for the library. Now you're considering doing that again for the DSS building. We're going to have a conversation later tonight about what to do with old courthouse. That's more money. Sandy just outlined, I don't, I didn't keep a tab, but I think half a million or more of fund balance that you're going to hit this year. At some point, you're going to continue upping payments, doing things faster, accelerating things to the point of the budget's not going to be able to sustain it. And I have a feeling that you're pretty close to that point right now.
And the concern also is, you know, you've discussed the fact that we own more and more of it. We are not like a private citizen. We might own more of it, but we can't go refinance and pull cash out.
I understand that.
And if, you know, if we get our fund balance too low because we've paid things off, having buildings there doesn't help our cash flow.
But I understand that, but also the citizens out there, if you have a respective plan and you, would anyone spend another quarter cent if you knew that you were going to save 200,000? I think I would.
I mean, if a tax increase is in place, then we would need to include that in the LGC paperwork if that's what you're proposing.
If, if we need to.
Do you have your, your numbers there in front of you for the financing stuff that you had looked into?
I have some of them, yes.
Okay, so what is your plan for what you have there? The payment that we were, that you had looked into and making a recommendation to pay annually?
I think he just brought it to you. The increase would be $29,000.
Okay, but the, the actual payment would be 141, is that what I'm seeing?
Right, exactly. We're paying 112 now, plus we have to put a little over 11,000 away in the reserve. The payment would go up $29,000. You could use the reserve and what you were going to budget for the reserve to cover the first five years or so. And from then, you'd have to figure out where the additional 29 would come from.
All right, gentlemen, we've, we've beat this horse along enough. We're time to make a decision.
Well, the thing about it there again, what, the cash flow statement is extremely important. That's why I asked for that back in January, to see our cash flow. This is, and I've done that, but I've taken old data and plotted that. Matter of fact, the last four years, I've taken that data and plotted the cash flow, revenues and expenditures over those months. June and July, the dip, we have to go get money and move. But this is the key. Anybody got any money invested out there? Everybody out here is probably earning less than 1% on the money. Money's great to look at if you can make something out of it, but don't just let it sit over in the pile and not put it to use. This is $208,000. That needs to be taken advantage of. What Sandy says is true. You can't just go out and get money all the time. But governments are very unique. They do have the power to tax. Now, this is a quarter of a cent is what it represents to you, to people. But we're going to save $887,000. You can't ignore that versus 690, 679. These opportunities only come around once in a lifetime.
I, I have a, a question too, Sandy, if you can help me with. I like the, the concept of paying debt off early. That's, that's a good idea. What concerns me is locking ourselves into certain things. And, you know, and what we don't know is going to happen, we don't know what it is, we don't know when it's going to happen. And I don't want to lock us into something where it hinders us later on. Have we had any conversation with the, the banks about having a loan payment schedule to where we can advance something? Where we're, we're obligated to a lesser payment? Maybe we make, we effectively pay the same amount that you're referring to.
Right.
But we, say twice a year, we, twice a year, we make a decision, let's send $40,000. Our payment is this, and that's all we're obligated to. But now let's, let's put a 40 extra thousand dollars on it. And then later in the year, maybe we do 35 in the second installment.
We've discussed with BDNT about making prepayments, and the understanding, I believe, is that we only pay a prepayment penalty if we pay it off in full early. So we can make prepayments, additional payments over the life of the loan if funds are available.
I think we get the best of both worlds possibly in that scenario.
That is the, you weren't here at that time in which I presented that, Jack. And Kenny voted for it at that time, was $100,000 to pay against those debts. That's before we were doing these refinancing. And that, and that's an opportunity also. There's no question about that. The problem is, is locking into 2.19 versus the 2.89. Why would you take a 2.89? And, and you can go to reverse side of this. I want the 2.19. That's where the savings is. That's why this is happening is because of that, more than anything else. I can make incremental payments, but I'm paying them at the 2.89% rate.
Did you calculate the 2.89 at 10% to see if we paid off the 2.89% in 10 years? If we were able to do it, how much savings there would be? Because dropping five years off is also a huge savings. It's not just the 0.7%.
That's true, it would be.
And I have not calculated that. I'd be curious to see what that number is.
I have done that with the original loan when I was doing that. The thing about it is, you can do the reverse. When you refinance, just because, when you're in trouble, you can refinance the current debt. LGC will let you refinance.
I don't think you can refinance to a longer term. If you can, I think you have to jump through some serious hoops and do some serious justifications.
Well, if you were in financial trouble, I would, I don't think they would have any choice.
I don't even want to have that conversation. We have to have that conversation.
I think the plan is not to get into financial trouble.
Well, we're not going to get in financial trouble if we continue the process of what we've been taxing the citizens over the last five years. We are not going to get in trouble unless we go on a spending spree.
Well, the concern also we have is, I believe it was Hyde County that we talked about when Hurricane Irene came through. Hyde County is still waiting for FEMA money. They are borderline bankrupt because they didn't have enough fund balance to cover what they needed. And we're very fortunate that we had the money to cover our needs and we were able to work with FEMA and get our reimbursement. But that's a concern as well for you all to consider.
We can talk probability.
All right, let's, let's try to take some kind of control here. Is everybody going to talk on each other or what? One at a time? Jack?
Let me, let me say that, that I appreciate the presentation that Johnny's got here before us. And getting back to the unknown part, would, I would be inclined to, to not lock myself in, to maybe pay in a year's time the amount that Johnny has on the sheet here, but to look at it at its face value with what's currently going on with the county, what our current needs are. And Johnny, I would be willing to address it twice a year.
You can't do.
I could certainly agree to that.
Unfortunately, you can't do that, Jack, with the rate. The rate is the critical thing, and you're exactly right.
Well, if you, getting back to Sandy's comment, if you, if you make extra payments, that does have a, a yield.
I understand.
It affects the yield.
But why don't we get the whole 887,000? Now, if we are so critical that we're going to need $50,000, one quarter of a cent from our citizens out there, if you tell them that you just saved them 208,000 extra dollars, what would they tell you? I know what, would you like to go ask my boss man what he would say? I had this conversation.
So are you suggesting that we raise taxes a quarter percent?
No, sir. I'm saying if we get in trouble of what you're saying, I'll get the quarter cent. That's covered this. Quarter, one quarter of a cent covers this, period, from where we're at.
Yeah, well, I think, you know, the, the strategic management foresight is to try not to get yourself and the county in the position where we have to raise taxes because we were a little bit over aggressive in trying to pay down your bills. And, and, you know, as I speak to the citizens, all of us want to save money, but also we need different things. You know, you can't buy a house, a car, you need these things, and, and various other things, and finance, and pay cash for it. It doesn't happen. So you finance it some longer term and give you smaller payments, you can have a better quality of life. So it's the same situation with the county. If we pay for everything, some things are going to come up short.
And that's true, Mr. Jordan, but if I give, if you buy five, I'll give you two. You can't throw them away. If, if we didn't have any money, I wouldn't be doing this. This is something that I know about. I have done repeatedly for 38 years. I know what I'm talking about. Read, go read your audit reports and what it says, and it will tell you that right in there. I hate to say that, but it's a fact. It is a fact. We need to save money. Now, it's right, yeah, if we're getting a cash flow problem, we're talking about $50,000 a year. That's what we're talking, in five years from now, we're going to get a bonus of 300,000 because the debt's paid off. That's why. This is, this is not rocket science. This is business finance of saving taxpayer money. This is business finance of saving taxpayer money and making money. You cannot, nobody can make forty-one percent on their money today, nobody. Anybody can, raise your hand. If what you got in the bank and what we're sitting on, three million bucks, earning less one percent. That don't make sense. I hate to be that blunt, but it's a fact.
All right, the fax is out now. What is the pleasure of the board?
Well, I make the motion, we go for ten years and save the taxpayers an additional two-hundred thousand, which brings in a total of eight-hundred-and-eighty-seven thousand.
Okay, we've got a motion on the floor to go through the ten-year plan on the DSS loan. Do we have a second? All right, motion dies. Are there any other motions?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make the motion to take the ten-year recommendation from our county.
What was that?
For the fifteen-year, for the fifteen-year recommendation from our county manager and the finance officer.
All right, we've got a motion on the floor to go with the fifteen-year plan. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Four to one.
Just, just for the sake of clarification, there's going to be some LGC paperwork and other paperwork that needs to be signed. Is, is that vote authorizing you to make all those signatures, just for clarification?
We need to make the, I should.
We bring that back as a resolution at the August first meeting.
Okay.
And that will give the authority to have all those signatures in place and will complete the packet at that time.
Thank you.
All right, Sandy, you go. Let's see, I think we moved up the personnel board recommendation at this point.
We did. Sandy's really not going to cover it. Sandy's here just to talk about any budgetary impacts that might come from this discussion.
We're going, we're going, we're going to put to the board what the recommendations are from Personnel Board at this point, sure. For the two, we got two issues that we're going to recommend. All right.
Can we just, can we just walk through them?
Let's walk through the, the three issues, I believe.
Well, I think there's actually six issues. Just about all of them that require any kind of action from the board deal with the Sheriff's Department. The first one is, the Personnel Board recommends that the sheriff be reclassified from his current position to a seventy-four N, which is the closest step in his current salary. Currently, the sheriff is off the pay scale. You want to do these individually, or we just run through them all?
Individually.
Okay, that's the first one.
All right, the planning board.
Personnel board.
The Personnel Board, um, we had a, the meeting and discussed the sheriff's salary did not fall into a category on, on the pay scale, am I right? So we will move him to a pace, to a position on the pay scale that would match his salary, so it would be.
So he'd be back on the pay scale.
Back on the pay scale. Yeah, it was at the back, but we moved it up.
June nineteenth is the date?
Yes, sir. All right, you want me to cover these individually, or you want to vote on them individually?
Yeah, I want to make a motion, I want to get everybody to get.
That might get, get.
Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion that the sheriff's pay be put on the scale, the scale that he previously was on, has been exceeded, so he needs to be on a scale that reflects what his current earnings are. And that would be a seventy-four E. And I make a motion that we adopt that pay scale for Sheriff Webb.
We've got a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign.
All right, the second issue was Lisa Lassiter, who is the sheriff's new administrative assistant. Previously, that position was paid a salary and a stipend for being DCI certified. The sheriff has asked that the stipend and the salary be merged into one salary, which would put her at a fifty-four I, as the closest pay to that position on the pay scale. And that is recommended by the Personnel Board.
That was recommended by the Personnel Board.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we reclassify Deputy Lisa Lassiter to a fifty-four I.
She's not a deputy, she's not a deputy, right, Sheriff?
No.
Administrative officer.
Administrative officer, to a fifty-four I pay scale.
All right, we've got a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion's second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign.
The next one we dealt with was, in the sheriff's reorganization, he's now created a captain position, which is going to be held by Glenda Parker. That's not something that the pay scale addresses. So the Personnel Board recommends creating position number sixty-five as a captain line item. So all future captains would go from wherever they were on the pay scale to the sixty-five position. And she's currently a sixty-four R. Sixty-five L would be the next closest, I believe, who's that, right, Commissioner Jordan? Left, right? Uh, sixty-five L is the closest to the sixty-four R in that position.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I make a motion, we move forward with that recommendation?
All, we've got a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign.
The next one is to reclassify the new chief deputy, Randy Hathaway, from his current position, which I think he was a sixty-four, due to being a sergeant, to now sixty-seven, which is what was previously held by the former chief deputy. So to move him to sixty-seven E.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we reclassify Chief Deputy Hathaway to a sixty-seven E, as recommended by the Personnel Board.
All right, we have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. All right, next.
The, the final recommendation from the Personnel Board was to reclassify Brandon Hawks, who is currently, or was a deputy and is now sergeant, to move him from the deputy ranking of sixty-one to the sergeant's ranking of sixty-four A.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we reclassify Brandon Hawks from a sixty-one G to a sixty-four A on the pay scale, county pay scale.
Do we have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion, all, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign.
Mr. Chairman, if I can get you to, if I get the board just to clarify what the effective day they want to use for those adjustments?
That would be, oh.
It can be, it can be the day they were made, it could be July fourth, first, it could be today. I just want to clarify for payroll sake, what day do y'all want to use?
Does the planning board have, Personnel Board have a recommendation?
I, my, my recommendation would be July the first, which is the first of the year.
That would make, that would make the most sense from a budgetary standpoint.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we make these changes effective July one.
Okay.
Second.
Got a motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign.
The, the last issue taken up by the Personnel Board, which does not come with a recommendation either for or against, is the sheriff, and I'll let him go and elaborate. He would like to take some, what he believes to be additional money in his budget and use it as an increment, an increase in the salaries of each of his deputies.
All right, Sheriff?
If I may. Gentlemen, I'm going to be the first one tonight, with all this going on here in the county, to come to you. And I'm not asking for any more money. What I have here is a situation, Ray, would you pass that out for me, please? As I came to you all back on July the fifth, I gave you a proposal that I had drafted up in trying to take the money that was there in my salaries, that was a deficit between what the chief deputy was making and Randy and Brandon. It came out that we had just a little bit of a, a little over eight thousand dollars that I could take and distribute between the salaries and my officers. I went into the, you, you referred me to the review board, the Personnel Board, which I went to on June the nineteenth and talked with about this situation. Thank you for what you all have just done as far as setting up the salaries for Hathaway, Parker, Hawks, and Lisa Lassiter. Just so you all know, you're talking about a breakdown of a dollar and seventy-five cent to twenty-seven dollars and twenty-five cent a month is the way, is the major money you're talking about. Lisa's was twenty-one dollars, of course, it grew up a little bit higher with Brandon's and them and so forth. But what I wanted to speak to you about now is my ground troop, my guys that are out here every day, every night, putting their lives on the line. What you have in front of you is a proposal that I have readjusted the salaries and so forth, just as Mr. Chappell asked me to do. And I've actually come up with more money this time than I did the first time, that's left over. What I'm asking you all to consider doing, gentlemen, again, I'm not asking for anything from, from the board as far as money. All I'm asking for is the readjustment of this money throughout my entire staff. I was told that it's nothing more than just the strokes of a computer key, is all it is. I understand that, that things are tight, but we're talking about money that's already budgeted, that's already there. I'm looking at giving a one to a two percent raise to my officers. You're talking less than, than one officer, you're talking three-hundred-and-seventeen dollars, you're talking two-hundred-and-ninety-eight for another one, you're talking three-thirteen for another one. You break that down and so forth, you're talking about twenty-four to twenty-six to twenty-seven dollars a month difference, fellas. That's all we're looking at. I'm not asking for anything, and if you take that down and break that down, as you see there, the last little bit, I'm asking, maybe consider giving it to me. I've worked hard as sheriff, and I don't very seldom do I come in and ask a whole lot for myself. The last pay raise that I received, as I think you all have heard me preach this before, was when Marshal Langston was on the Board of Commissioners. That's the last time that anybody came and said, Sheriff, this is for doing a good job, thank you. Other than the cost of living raise, which I greatly appreciate. As I said, all I'm asking for you to do is consider taking this money and breaking it down and distribute it amongst my officers. These guys get out here and work hard. If you don't believe what they do, all you got to do is look at the newspaper today, the News Herald. Twenty-some break-ins solved. Last week, when everybody was on the Fourth of July holiday, everybody, I hope, had a good chance to enjoy a holiday, my guys were at work, working, serving a search warrant. We're crawling underneath the house recovering stolen property. We recovered over twenty thousand dollars worth of stolen property. We saw five break-ins in the city of Suffolk. We got three stolen cars out of the city of Suffolk. We stopped and saw the break-in in Cho One County, and they didn't even know it occurred. And we saw thirteen break-ins here in our county. Our citizens that have been coming back and getting that property are more than appreciative for everything we've done. All I'm asking you to do is show my guys how much you appreciate them. That's what I'm coming to you for. They get out here, we work, we do everything, we do what we can. Can we solve everybody's problems? No. No. Can we solve every B and E? No. But at least I'd like to be able to sit there and say that I try to give my best to my guys. You heard earlier about the car deal? It's real simple on the car deal. We ordered a car. Got the car in, everything, got ready to get it, went to Toby and Sandy, tried to get the money. We had a three-hundred-and-nine-thousand-dollar hiccup. That's it. I was told I couldn't get my money to buy my car. My car was sold.
At some point, you like me here, Jake, here.
It was sold.
Was that in fashion than you?
I don't know.
We turned around, and I was told later on that I got my money back, that I could go ahead and order my car, which I did. My car came in, it was paid for, as Sandy said, and I very much appreciate it. Twenty-three thousand eighty-four dollars. But on June the fifth, I just happened to come in here because somebody had told me, and I had five thousand and some odd dollars left that I was going to use to put my blue lights on. Y'all had an amendment for you to take that away from me then. So I didn't have any money to put blue lights, stripes, or anything on my car. As I said, I had a car sitting in South Carolina, it was no good to me. June thirtieth, after that day on June fifth, y'all made an amendment, y'all allowed me to get that money back into my budget to pay for my car. Now my car is being processed and so forth down there in South Carolina, and a couple of the parts. And I don't blame the folks. They wouldn't order anything for me for my car until they made sure they had the money to make sure it was in hand, which is just good business. But as I hope now, within the next week or so, as I got today, I'm going down this week to get the radios and stuff straight, hopefully I'll have that car within the next week, week and a half. And as Ray said, he's the one that has to put his name and his life out there on that car. I try to give him the best I can, but that car is one of the ones that's, that's wore down. Kenny knows about riding school buses. You ride school buses to a point where they become unsafe. And that's what he had to do, when he had to buy new buses to put in there. He hated spending taxpayers' money, but unfortunately, that came a little bit from the state and a little bit from the county, too. But anyway, what I have before you, fellas, is just a simple proposal where I'm not asking the taxpayers to pay any extra money. I'm just taking the money that's in my budget and distributing it amongst my officers. I'm going all the way from top to bottom. And in the end of it, I'm asking a little bit for myself. That's what I'm asking for. And as I said, it's been some time since I've gotten any type of raise. Other department head, what I understand, it was another department head this year, did the exact same thing. There was no questions asked. It went right in, no problem. And I was told that by the department head. There's pay raises given, department heads getting raises. We just seem to be left out sometimes. Yes, you all did something for us a couple of years back. But again, you took care of the deputies, but you didn't give anything to my ranking staff. You didn't give anything to me, you didn't give anything to my chief deputy, you didn't give anything to my secretary. This time, thank you for what you've done, you've looked after my ranking staff, except for me. Now I'm asking you to look at this, and if you have any questions, I'll be glad to break it down for you.
Sheriff, I'm not asked this question, but I do understand, and I know this to be a fact, that we do have certain offices that work only at night.
Yes, sir.
In most organizations, there are shift differentials.
Yes, sir, there is.
And I just asked, and I have asked this question, that we address this issue because I do not think that that is really fair. Now, what is incremental dollars? I don't know. But that is normal practice. Maybe not in government, but it's normal practice anywhere when people are sacrificing their life and their time in abnormal hours. Now, there are some people that love those hours, but most people do not. That is not the norm.
Yes, sir.
And I would like to see that within anything that we do do, that there are some, something addressed to that issue.
Yes, sir.
Now, if, if that's a redistribution of this, so be it.
Yes, sir, I would be glad to do whatever came with that. Let me just put this, too, that part of that was due to the fact that we were shorthanded.
Right.
And I have since then filled positions, and we've got some people that are certified, that don't have to worry about sending to school, that are already out here working. And so, once I get them trained and get them confident out here on the street, we plan on trying to rotate shifts on them. I'm looking at trying to get where we, you know, have people working day shift, and have a day shift, a mid-shift, and night shift. Trying to cover the county twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. Right now, it's kind of tough because of vacation, you understand that.
Right.
But yes, sir, I do appreciate it. I do know that the city of Norfolk and different places like that, other counties and so forth, make the adjustment for somebody that's working night shift.
Well, even, even if we make the rotation, it still should be an incremental part of that, that you get it this week, I get it next week if we do that.
Yes, sir, I would totally agree with that, totally agree with that, yes, sir.
I would like for us to do anything that we do, that we be in support of those situations. I mean, these are people that are out there sacrificing their life. And I'm not going to evaluate anybody what they do. But I do know one thing, if you strap the gun on your side, there's somebody out there that wants to look back at you with one, too.
Yes, sir.
And I appreciate that fact. And I appreciate what you do and the rest of the deputies. Sometimes we complain about things that aren't done, and it's easy to do that. We're all human, we are not perfect. But if we have the motivation and the desire to get better, we will get better.
County Commissioners is kind of like being a sheriff. Nobody ever comes to me unless they got something to complain about. I don't ever hear any good news. Every time somebody walks in my door, it seems like somebody complained about something or something bad has happened.
But it makes you feel good when you do help somebody.
Exactly.
Now, Sheriff, I did call you one time.
Yes, you did, yes, you did. Yes, you did. When I see this, when I see this on the front page of the paper, I can sit back and tell you, my guys work hard. I was out there with them. Yeah, we got your golf par back.
All right.
But anyway, that's all I'm asking for you, gentlemen, is just complete. As again, the big thing on this is Kenny, Jack, John, Mr. Jordan. No, I'm going, Mr. Jordan, Mr. Graham. Jordan, Mr. Graham, because I'm not asking for any more money. I'm just asking for this to be moved around a little bit. And as I was told, as I said again, just a couple of strokes of a key on a computer is all I'm asking for.
Mr. Chairman, I'm prepared to make a motion that we authorize the sheriff to reappropriate these funds to give the raise.
Will you add that one statement that I made into it?
Can we have a little discussion first, make sure everybody got some input on this now? We, we, we thought to discuss this in, in the personnel board, and we all, we, we come to a deadlock and decided to let the commissioners make the decision. Whatever, I want all the commissioners to put feet in for this. Kenny?
Is the money there?
No.
That's my question to Sandy and Toby.
No.
There are funds remaining at the end of eleven, twelve, when we get the budget for twelve, thirteen, the sheriff provided us with the salaries that he had planned to put his guys and ladies in. We budgeted accordingly. The increases that you all provided tonight were already budgeted. I sat down and did um, a chart showing what we budgeted and what the proposed changes were that you all have approved tonight. The twelve, thirteen budget, there were only eight hundred and twenty-two dollars remaining with those changes. There were funds left over in eleven, twelve, because there were vacancies for several months, there were some guys that were moved around, some lesser salaries, but all that had been taken into account for the twelve, thirteen budget, so for this year, there were no extra funds there.
So what was the favorable balance in eleven, twelve?
Eight thousand dollars.
Sixteen thousand dollars.
So this was the favorable balance from last year?
Sixteen thousand dollars.
Sixteen.
Actually, I, I probably meant ten, because six of that was to cover Ray Freeman's salary, so it's actually about ten.
So we had ten thousand dollars favorable from last year.
I had figured out eight thousand, two hundred and twelve dollars broke down, respectively, gentlemen.
And that rolled into fund balance?
Yes.
Okay.
And the only reason I came before you then was when I was told to come here on the fifth, and I was told to meet with y'all on the nineteenth, and I was told on the nineteenth to come back on the sixteenth, and that's why I'm here tonight, gentlemen.
The only other thing I need to look at is to make sure there were no other shortfalls within his departmental budget that that was used to cover. And if not finalized numbers, we still have last, you know, final bills coming in for year end. I don't know what the overall budget was at the end of the year. Some of those funds may have been needed to cover other shortfalls.
So on June thirtieth, we had sixteen thousand dollars favorable balance?
No.
Those are not final numbers for the year. We had sixteen in that line, I know there were six or seven thousand dollars short in the part-time salaries line, I'm not sure what other shortfalls.
So the total department budget was favorable?
No, that's what she continually saying, she's not done with the numbers yet.
Right. So the numbers are not final yet. I'm not saying that there's no money there, I'm saying I don't have final numbers for you to do that.
Well, this, this kind of brings about the point of our refinancing. You know, we're willing to go into uh, fund balance and add another seventy-eight thousand dollars a year to pay off a loan a little earlier, but yet, if we have to go in for eight thousand dollars for the sheriff, who's out here day to day, working, we've got some hesitations.
You just saved twenty, Henry.
No, no, Johnny.
That, that was past us, guys, let's, let's move on.
The thing about it is, you know, we need to move forward on this and go ahead and put it to bed. We can do it.
All right, Jack, have you got any input on this?
No.
All right. No other input? Any motions to be made? No, he said he would be ready to make a motion.
I'll make the motion that we authorize the sheriff to uh, uh, make the pay increases that he has recommended, based on his ability to uh, reshuffle the money in his budget, or if it's not in a budget, then it would come from fund balance.
Second.
All right, we've got a motion and a second on the floor. All in the favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like aye. All right, carry on.
Thank you. Appreciate it, gentlemen.
Gentlemen, I would expect all the department heads in the next few weeks to start coming back with any extra money to split that up amongst their, their personnel, so.
That's fine.
I would be ready to go with that.
That's fine.
All right, next one. Renee's next. All right, next one, the agenda, Renee.
One quick question, we have a specific date. I was just asked about the chief debt, same as the specific date, July first?
July one.
I would recommend July one.
No, we need to make the other motions, gentlemen.
I make a motion of the salary increase or redistribution we just made effective July one.
All right, a second.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like aye.
Good evening.
Hey, Renee, how are you today?
I'm doing good. I'm, I'm gonna try and be very brief.
You got any extra money you want us to divide amongst everybody?
Give me, Nick, put me on the agenda for next month, and I'll come back. Um, you have two reports in your packet this time. The first one is actually the month of June report. Nothing out of ordinary to report with that. Your other report is actually a comprehensive report of this last fiscal year, and this just gives you an overview of the year. The bottom line that you want to look at is our total combined collection rate is ninety-four point five seven. We are a little bit above last year. We're still not down ninety-five where we want to get, but we're getting there slowly and surely.
Ninety-eight.
Ninety-eight. Let us get it ninety-five, then we'll jump to ninety-eight. So, do y'all have any questions in reference to either of these reports?
I know you don't have the figures right now, but we budgeted uh, something like five million, six hundred thousand for our tax revenue for the year. Uh, I noticed on the May thirty-first, we were probably about three hundred thousand dollars short. Have we, I'll be making any progress?
Are we talking about two different budget years, or?
Well, five thirty-one would be the two thousand, eleven, twelve, that's what we budgeted for eleven, twelve, five million, six hundred thousand, six, nine, whatever.
Yeah, um, Sandy just left, so I have the exact number, but I think she got just about to the penny. I'd say we were within a few thousand-ish.
So June has.
I haven't compared those two figures.
That should be the number right there.
Yep. Five, six, five, nine.
Five, six, five, nine number. That's, that's pretty close, went off my recollection of what we budgeted.
That, that was the current.
We had outstanding three hundred and twenty-three thousand, but this was at the, okay, this is for this year.
Right, so the end of June, so that's the year, that's the year total number.
Okay. So we did make it, we just about made it.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Simple enough, Renee.
Okay, I've got one more thing, and this should be fairly simple. You have a request for refund in your packet. This is a taxpayer that we received a payment through the debt set-off process, and they had come in and paid prior to us receiving that. They do not owe us any delinquent taxes at this time, we're not interested in doing a prepayment for two thousand and twelve, so they have requested the refund in the amount of two fifty-one, two hundred and fifty-one dollars.
Any questions? Need a motion to approve the request for refund.
To who?
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like aye.
The only other thing I do want to mention to you, because I know, I think, we've had one gentleman, I think, that's talked to Jack a little bit in reference to this, and this individual is not the only person that this has been a concern with over time, and I talked with Sandy about it, and we're going to look into it, and that is receiving electronic payments, especially through online, the online banking systems, because it's very confusing mainly to our water customers that go online and make a payment. If they make a payment, say, on the fifteenth or the twenty-fourth of the month, their online banking system is saying, hey, we've taken these funds out of your account, but because we don't receive the funds electronically, the bank is actually having to cut a hard copy check and put it in the mail to us. So therefore, it can be as much as four or five days later, causing penalties to go on that account. So that's something that we are going to look into, that we, we really don't know the dynamics with it right now, but hopefully, maybe we can get something to y'all in reference to that the first of the month, when I come back asking for more money, Graham.
And we do have, we have had an increase in the number of people paying online.
Well, there is, and I know Ruin at Tron Electric has, within the last year, gone to the electronic payments, and so many people do use online banking now, and it is kind of a disillusion when you go in there and make that payment, and you think, you know, who you're sending it to is getting it the next day, and they don't.
I guess we would have to make that available on the county website, in other words, payment, payment buddy, button on the county website.
Well, now, the third party that we use through the county website, we actually do get the very next day. This would just strictly be for those that use their own personal banks to bank online, that we would be receiving those payments electronically. And like I say, Sandy and I need the one right now know really the dynamics of that, and we do know our water software can accept those type of payments, we do know that much, but as far as the other dynamics, we don't know right now. But I just wanted to mention that, because I knew someone had mentioned it to Jack, that we were aware of and looking into it.
So how's our staggered billing working?
It's working good. We, we still have some lines on the, you know, sixteenth and the twenty-fifth, but they're not, not down to Toby's office quite as bad as they were. So, but it is working good, and it's definitely spreading out the mail throughout the month.
All right, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
All right, Billy, Billy in here?
Billy's actually on vacation and asked me to take care of this. What you have in front of you is a mutual aid agreement between the counties in the Northeast. What this will do is, if there's a FEMA declared emergency and we send equipment or people to a county other than ours to do work, this would allow us to be reimbursed for, that was man hours, that was equipment hours, if we had this mutual aid agreement in place. So, it's a formality that FEMA requires, is what I've been told.
Previously discussed before, it's two, Toby, right?
I believe so. I believe Billy's talked to, I believe he has.
I believe it was last month.
Okay. That's what, that's what this is.
Any questions?
So it's not something an individual county took the lead on, it's something that FEMA kind of uh, said, this is what's available to you?
I actually from, and again, I know a little about this, I'm, I'm going off what I've been told from Billy, that when Bertie County had their tornadoes, and we sent men and equipment over there, there was some concern and questioning about how we could count that and be reimbursed since we didn't have a mutual aid agreement in place. I believe that's what started this. But i- if you need me to, I can get Billy here to, to give you the exact details, but I believe that's correct.
I think it's nothing but a good thing.
I just see one correction. I believe this is a correction.
Where you at?
If you look on the first page, item four, it said, provide cooperation and coordination of activities relating to emergency disaster mitigation. Redness, redness.
No, that's redness, that's correct. This is correct, it's red.
Trey hits you on the head, you get red.
Sure, I, I, I'll make sure that correction's done.
Did you say, did you say redneck response?
I don't think that's covered by FEMA.
Redness.
All right, do we have a motion to accept this mutual aid agreement as presented?
To who?
A second.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like aye.
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
All right, next, Morgan.
Good evening, y'all. Um, first thing we have.
It's getting hot, isn't it?
Yeah, I know, it's a little stuffy. Um, first thing we have is a presentation to Mr. Dan Lang for his years of service to Gates County on the planning board.
Dan, what'd you come for?
Dan, we, County Gig, we'd like to recognize you and appreciate the service you give on the planning board for the last forty years, the time of your service. I'll give a little touch from the old black years, presented to Dan Lang, the recognition for your service, years of dedicated service to the County of Gates, two thousand nine, three thousand eleven.
All right, secondly, um, a couple of months ago, some of the commissioners acting as citizens, not as a collective group, just as individuals, presented an idea to our planning board of a couple of text amendments, and the planning board is just asking for the commissioners to decide if that, as a group, if that's something you want us to pursue or not. Um, and those text amendments were a reduction of road frontage from one seventy-five to one twenty-five from one seventy-five, so a reduction in road frontage. It would be raising the threshold of a minor subdivision from two lots or less to three lots or less. Removing or adjusting the parent parcel rule, um, it is a very ambiguous rule, so it probably should be modified for clarity. And lastly, utilizing the technical review committee only for major subdivision review, not for minor subdivision. So the planning board is just asking if you all want us to pursue that as a group, or how do you like to proceed?
Mr. Chairman, I think it's.
Well, I am not in favor of reducing road frontage in Gates County from a hundred and seventy-five to one twenty-five. We have plenty of land in Gates County. With what Ms. Brule said, we do have ordinance problems with our board, as we have it far as those people just, a single wide trailer on ten acres is not causing a problem, but if you stack them side by side, or even row houses in Gates County, that's a problem right now with the land that we have. We need to be encouraging larger lot sizes and reduce what's on the lot, to make it accommodating for those people that are unfortunate and have certain things that they have to do. There's no need to reduce the lot size, except for a developer. Well, that's fine, if he's doing the right thing, and you hold him accountable to certain things, but we don't need that in Gates County yet. We do not need that. I want million-dollar homes, I don't want ten thousand dollar homes, but I am supportive of those people that are less fortunate than I, for mobile homes, people that have hardships. There's a many a person around this county that started off in a mobile home, a many, and now they have nice homes on there. No one wants to continue their life in that situation. Reducing the lot size is not the, the answer to do that. It is just not. We uh, all that's doing is promoting these things that we don't want in Gates County, in my opinion.
Well, I, I think, I think you made a key, you said that you don't want, that some do and some don't. And I think the proposal is not that you reduce the lot size, it's that you reduce the road frontage. So if you reduce the road frontage, what you're going to do is going to increase the back portion, allowing them to have a smaller frontage. And I, I, I think it's important, I, I agree with that, but I also agree with the fact that, you know, we should probably reduce the lot size from one acre to probably three quarters an acre. Uh, you could still have the, the side clearance and back clearance that you, that you need in order to meet the health department requirements and our current zoning requirements. Uh, you know, everyone in Gates County does not have five, six, seven, eight, ten acres of land, and uh, you've got to think of everyone, not just the few that, that has access to, to quite a bit of land. And uh, I would be in favor of moving forward with this, because I know it's going to help a lot of people in this county. And I also would be in for, in favor of the planning board looking at uh, what the ramifications are, if we would reduce the lot size from one acre to three quarters an acre. It's already, if we're going to reduce from a hundred and seventy-five road frontage to a hundred and twenty-five, we could also do a percentage on that on the lot size. So I think it's something that, that the citizens of this county, we're not advocating or trying to uh, in, increase uh, growth in the county through smaller lot sizes, but, but uh, you've got to look at what people can afford, what they have, uh, as we make these rules and laws. So I'm in favor of county, of the planning board moving forward with this.
Let me uh, restate my thing, Mr. Jordan. The one twenty-five road frontage, I, I was using that as an example of reducing the lot size. I agree with you. That, I don't have any problem with fluctuating the road frontage number. But I do, I think the one acre thing needs to stay in place. And I understand what you're saying. I, I wasn't really thinking of it in that sense, but I agree with what you have said from that standpoint.
You're not coming with any recommendation, you're asking us what direction do we want you to take in consideration?
Yes, sir.
I would, I would ask, now, this is one of those things, gentlemen, that I don't want to beat around for seven or eight months. So I would ask that the, uh, that the planning board just simply look at, uh, the thoughts that have been stated. You know, the one twenty-five road frontage, um, reducing the size of the lot to possibly three quarters of an acre. And, um, spend a little time on that. Give us pro, whatever pros you see, whatever cons you see. You're well versed and your group is well versed, your board, on the, the general statutes or, or, I should say, the ordinances that are on the books. Because you deal with them day to day. And email us with what, the scope of what you discovered. These would be the pros, these would be the cons, and take each one on its individual basis. Road frontage first, lot size second. And give us something that we can digest and come back and have a debate and make a decision.
Even better, the ordinance review committee met and discussed this, uh, it's maybe about a month or two ago. I have the minutes with the discussion already ready for you. I don't have it with me, but we came up with options. Option A, option B for each choice. I will get them out to you first thing tomorrow.
That'd be great.
Kenny, you got anything on this?
I'm, I'm for looking at it also. I, I really feel for this lady sitting here in the office of Ms. Brule in our, in the courtroom here. She's got a ten acre lot and she can't get anything on it per se unless it's an expensive home. And, and I, I really feel like we need to look at, look at that somehow or another. Hopefully we can do something for Ms. Brule before too, too much time goes by. But how about the next person? I, I want something to look at in that also.
I was one of them that, that put this request in place to start with. Originally our lot sizes, I believe when, that's what, six or seven years ago, lot sizes were of one hundred and thirty-five feet. Across, that was the, the original, then it was bumped up to one hundred and seventy-five.
Hundred, one hundred and twenty-five, one hundred and seventy-five.
The two to three lot subdivision threshold, that changed too because it was a three lot subdivision. Well, it was three when I had mine done and then it was changed to two. And it became a very expensive process to get a third lot if you just wanted three. And that's one of the reasons that I was interested in, in trying to do something with that. A lot of people want to cut out three lots and three lots or two lots, it shouldn't cost them more to do two, two to three. And three was what it originally was set up at.
Mr. Chairman, let me, let me say this, this is just a public comment. When those things were put into place, um, the intent, and none of us were on the board at the time, but the intent was to protect Joe Jones's property. You know, he, he had invested in this property, he developed it the way he wanted it to, and the intent was to keep people building on top of each other, to, to keep the rural, they were in hopes that that would keep the rural setting. So it, the, the intent was good, um, but there's some, some corrections that need to be made. So the intent was good, that's what I just wanted to say.
I think the thing to do is you, send us back what you've got and then, then all, all of us will make some kind of decision on the text amendment.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I would, I would ask that they put it together and, uh, bring it to us as a recommended change. Uh, of course, we'll get an email, we have a chance to comment on it prior to then, and, you know, based on those.
I have no problem with that either.
I've got a, a text amendment form that I can get filled out and we'll just submit that then.
Mr. Jordan, you want to give them a date?
Well, I'd say by the, the next meeting, the, well, do we want to say the August fourth, uh, first meeting or, because that's only two weeks away. You probably need to do it, you know, October meeting.
September meeting.
September, I'm sorry, September meeting.
Just for clarification sake, if the planning board doesn't recommend that you do any of these things, what then?
I'm gonna be prepared to make a decision based on the email, I see.
Then we'll make a decision.
Okay.
I think they brought it before us and I think that, that, you know, is a consensus that this is something that, you know, we're interesting, interested in seeing being pursued. And so, you know, you should give us some recommendation. Even if the planning board says, well, we don't recommend any change, it should, something could come. And if we want to make a change regardless, I think we should have that option as well.
I think the most, the multiple of the board is pretty much heading that direction. So that should give the planning board an idea of what the board commissioners is, is interested in.
All right, got it. I'll send those out first thing in the morning. Secondly, Ms. Suzie Valentine, who she is not present tonight, she owns a parcel on one one three two, NC thirty-two North. She is requesting due to financial hardship, um, a fee waiver for her rezoning, the fee would be six hundred dollars. She wants to have it rezoned, um, from R one to RMH one.
The one question, the six hundred dollars is one of the things that, that I wonder about. Where'd that number comes from? Why cost six hundred dollars a go-to? This is, this is one of the things I've always wondered.
It was in line-
It was here when I come here.
Right. When, in two thousand and seven, when y'all got zoning and the economy was going good, it wasn't in line with Camden, Bequemen, Pasco-Tank. It was in line with everybody else. Um, I don't know that the counties have changed theirs due to the economy. I can find out.
I would like to know that. I mean, six hundred dollars is a lot of money. Now, if it costs that much is one thing. I mean, I know advertising is expensive, CalCon's are kind of hard on the phone with them.
Well, I, I'd like to be able to take a look at that lot and see what the surrounding lots are. And if you remember a while back, I believe Ms. Miller came forward and requested a waiver. And where she lived is all mobile homes. And it really, uh, you know, I don't see how we can justify to say that it's residential when ninety-five percent or more of those homes on that entire road is a mobile home. And this may be the same situation, if that's the case, then, uh, you know, I think that our zoning ordinance has done it unjust. And we need to take a look at that. So I would recommend that we not, uh, make a decision right now, but give it, give us a chance to take a look at that lot and just see what the, as a commissioner. I know, I'd like to see what the surrounding properties are and just what it looks like, and just so that we can move forward on that. But certainly, you know, if, if the conditions are such that it would warrant rezoning that whole area, you know, I'd be in favor.
So what is the distance from the next, the closest RMH one?
A very far ways away. In fact, the entire road is nothing but R one, R one all the way down.
What's, what's that?
It's a goo, it's a good mix of older single family homes, not in the best condition, but older single family homes and double lots. It's a good mixture. But the entire road is zone R one residential.
What is, what is the road, what's the road name?
It's thirty-two.
Where is it?
Thirty-seven, I'm sorry, it's NC thirty-seven outside of Gates.
Outside of Gates.
Other side of Gates or this side?
Heading north towards Virginia.
North side of Gates.
One one three two, NC thirty-seven.
What's the address?
Um, eleven thirty-two.
I thought that way myself.
So it's between, it's between the town, it's between the town of Gates and the Virginia line, or still on thirty-seven?
Johnny Harrell Road and Gates.
Right before.
Just before.
Just before. It's a vacant lot.
Clear.
It's a vacant lot.
Clear vacant lot.
Anything there before?
No, sir. Because I tried to find that avenue for her as well.
I think we need to take a look at it. And, uh, I, I agree with, uh, Chairman, you know, we ought to look at that fee as well.
And what is the lot size?
It's an acre even. She wanted to meet, uh, with the planning board tomorrow just to get a recommendation from them.
She can still meet with them, unless, I mean, there's no reason why she couldn't. We're, we're gonna look at it as far as the fee on, at this point.
In that case, we can just discuss it in August then, and then we'll just let her meet with you guys finally in August.
Keep in mind, when you're discussing things like that, you guys are bound to a book that has rules in it. We're getting ready to talk about a fee, fee waiver in just a second. It's another one. And when we do these things, we set precedence. I mean, we want to be user friendly, but we have to treat everybody equally. So I just want to, as far as you guys making recommendations, um, I think a lot of times we should get into, these are, Mr. Jones, these, these are the rules that are in place now. And then bring those situations to us.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Um, the second one, um, I'm bringing on behalf of Ms. Paige Hedgepath, Tar Hill Barbecue. One would think that that parcel would be zone commercial, right? It's not. It's zoned A one, and that is an egregious error that the county consultants made back when zoning was being put in place.
It's not zoned commercial and it was a restaurant been there for ever?
Yeah. Yes, sir. And also-
For me, that's forever.
And, and it being a major strategic highway corridor as well, it would be very advantageous for Gates County to zone that and a lot of Highway thirteen as commercial. So we want to fix that error, um, so we're requesting the six hundred dollars.
Guarantee you one thing, Dan, it's my fault, no matter what happens. Guarantee that.
So to correct that error, we would like to have her fee waived as no fault of her own.
Are we gonna have to, in this situation, post signs along the road? Have a certain length of time for residents to respond?
I have to post the parcel with, uh, at minimum ten days before. I have to send out letters to all the adjacent property owners.
How many?
And do notice must be posted in the paper ten days.
Just the adjacent property owners?
Correct.
To leave a sign.
I always send to the ones across the road, but it's just the ones that are actually touching. But you do stick the sign out there that says rezoning, they can't miss it.
Let me ask the question, do you send that certified mail?
No.
I think we can, can we act on this one? I mean, this is a county mistake to, it was supposed to be residential, it was business they're just talking about. I don't see why we can't act on this, on this, this request.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I want to speak to, uh, Morgan. On that, um, property across from Tar Hill, is it just right in the Y? Building is, I know it's vacant.
The crab.
Right, is that, is that part of this rezoning also?
No, sir, that is a totally different parcel.
All right, what is it zone?
A one.
A one.
Um, the planning board, right when I got here, was working on a corridor study, a commercial corridor study. We're trying to get back on that this year. That was an identified target area that should be commercial. There were several others that need, that were identified that should be commercial areas. So we're gonna get back on that, and this is one of them that was included in that.
All right, how about, how about back down thirteen south from there? I know you have a man that's running a body shop there. You had corner high, I think it's what, corner high, there used to be a grocery store or whatever that was there.
I believe that was another one too.
Was that, was that same area?
I believe that area is a mix of A one and R one. Where the store is, where that U-Haul place is. I believe that's a mix of A one and R one. So we have some corrections that we need to make and we're gonna get on that this year.
Gentlemen, you want, do you want to act on this one for, uh, the Tar Hill restaurant?
How big a parcel are we talking about there?
I believe it's either two or three acres.
And we're talking about, um, the Tar Hill sitting on this, this two or three acres?
The restaurant, the former High Cotton, it's-
I would ask that, let us take a look at both of them and let's vote on it on our August meeting. August first, Valentine and Hedgepath. You know, this one is almost a given, but-
I have no problem with that.
We have some justification for whatever we do and don't do. We could do the review and, and do it on August meeting.
Before you make a decision, let, let me ask this question. I know that there's a new business going in beside Tar Hill. Is this, this rezoning delay gonna hamper that business at all?
No, sir.
Okay.
Okay. Um, moving on to Board of Adjustments, I've got four vacancies that need to be filled. The districts that are going to be represented right now with the people who are staying is Gatesville, Yorn Gates. Based on the general statutes, the following appointments need to be made. I need two members at two-year terms, one member at a one-year term, one alternate at a three-year term.
All right.
Say that again?
They're staggered.
Right.
So I've got, right now I've got two members who have, are at three-year terms, they're staying. So the only things that y'all need to fill are two members, two-year terms, one member at a one-year term, and one alternate at a three-year term. So one, two, three, four.
Have you got, we've got, uh, I've got a application here from David Boyce, he sits on that board. Has he wanted those seats?
Yes, he filled Paulette's seat and he would like to be reappointed if you would consider him.
What, what would that be, a three-year term?
Um, he would be either two-year or one-year, it's your choice of which you'd like to make him.
I mean, he, he, I've talked to him this morning, he wants, he, he filled out the application, he wants to stay on that board. And I'd like to, to, uh, see that he's, you know, stays there. We got somebody that wants to be on the board and is already sitting on that board.
And so, if we reappoint him, how many do you need?
If you, if you put him at a two-year, then I'll need three people.
And those three people will be for what length terms?
One for two, one for one year, and one alternate for three years.
So that's aside from Boyce.
Aside from Boyce.
Does the alternate attend the meetings but have no voting, is that, or does that just, that person is, has no contact?
If I get lucky enough to have everybody there, they are allowed to sit in the audience, ask questions. They get paid for showing up, but they don't have a vote. But if I don't have a full board, they sit, they sit in, they sit in for them.
Still without a vote?
They, they still do get to vote if they sit on the full board of five.
In places.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to open the floor for nominations.
All right, we got a motion to open the floor for nominations.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Uh, we've got, um, let's, let's start with this, this one is an obvious one, is, uh, we've got-
Shouldn't we, shouldn't we nominate?
Well, I was gonna just read them off who we got listed here. I mean, then y'all go from that point on. I've got, I've got two here that looks like, only two names that are, are asked to be on this board. I've got one for a planning committee.
You should have, you should, you should have Boyce, Perry-
Oh, we got Wright.
Wright and Lang.
Daniel Lang, okay.
And Radmore.
Radmore. All right, they're stable to go, that's why they're seated, all right.
Did you all get one for Knight as well?
She's planning board, right?
She, she meant Board of Adjustments, but she put planning.
Yeah.
Uh, let's do one seat at a time. Let's do a three-year, uh, what do you need, what do you need, two, two years?
Two, two years.
All right, let's do one, two years.
That's not four, sir.
It could be either one, you know, we could, we could do, it makes no difference. All right, we need, let's start with the one, two-year appointment, start with, one, two-year appointment to have a nomination.
I'd like to nominate David Boyce to be reappointed to a two-year term.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to nominate, uh, Reverend Dr. Joseph Perry for, uh, a two-year term.
Okay. Any other nominations for a two-year term?
I mean, two-year terms, we have one.
Oh, you do have two, okay.
One would be for David if-
Yeah, we can both of them, we can go ahead and do both of them, no problem. Are there any other nominations for a two-year term? If not, I said we got to go out of nomination.
Motion is closed. Motion closed.
We can go ahead and nominate for the one-year term too over here.
You can do them all.
We need, and you need one one-year term, is that right?
Uh-huh, and an alternate.
All right, and off. All right, we need a nomination for the, uh, alternate, uh, for the one-year term. We have a, uh, Lauren Sean Wright. We have a Daniel Wilson Lang. And we have a Kathy Radmore.
And Naomi Knight.
Naomi Knight, is she there too? She's on this right. Okay, Naomi Knight. I had a Naomi Knight.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to nominate Mr. Dan Lang to a one-year term based on his experience in the planning board.
All right, we have any other nominations? All right, do we have any other nominations? All right, now we need the nomination for a alternate. We have, uh, Miss, uh, Mr. Wright, I reckon. We have Ms. Knight, and Ms. Radmore.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to nominate Mrs. Kathy Radmore.
As an alternate.
Right, yes, sir.
All right, do we have any other nominations for the alternate position? If not, we'll entertain a motion to go out of nominations.
So move.
Go up a second.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. All right, we have, that's the list, uh, two two-year appointments, two nominations, of Mr. Alexander Perry and Mr. David Boyce. Uh, a motion to accept the two as, as the, uh, appointments to the Board of Adjustments.
So move.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. All right, now we have, uh, Mr. Dan Lang as a one-year appointment to the Board of Commissioners, I mean, Board of, uh, Adjustment. Have a motion to accept him as an appointment.
So move.
Second.
Second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign.
Next, we have a Ms. Radmore, Ms., um, Kathy Radmore, as an alternate position on the Board of Adjustment, who have a motion to accept her as our alternate.
So move.
Go up a second.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, you have appointments to your Board of Adjustment.
Thank you. Okay, last thing. We have received three RFPs for our scattered site, Grand Administration, Holland Consulting, Quick Management Solutions LLC, and the Wooton Company. Um, you have their proposals in your hand, but the final, the final cumulative amounts are the Wooton Company, fifty-two thousand seven hundred, which includes indirect cost and all reimbursable items, including the ceiling amount, including mileage billed at the current federal mileage rate. They have two offices, one in Raleigh, one in Greenville. Uh, secondly, you have Quick Management Solutions LLC, with an amount of forty-eight thousand eight hundred, but no travel, incidental, or additional expenses, no per diems are proposed, and they would be traveling from Durham. And lastly, we have Holland Consulting, which did not give us a cumulative sum, so I would advise the Commissioners to exclude this RFP from consideration, based on the lack of necessary information.
I noticed that.
Yeah.
So, basically, the quick is forty, what'd you say, forty-eight?
Forty-eight, eight, not all-inclusive.
Plus, plus whatever expenses that they come up with.
And fifty, and Wooton is fifty-two, seven, all-inclusive package.
Yeah, we, we'd use the Wooton, we, we use them already, didn't we?
Yeah, we've got some experience with them, and, uh, they really have a detailed plan for how they're gonna execute the grant, which aligns with what we've been doing in the past. And I certainly, uh, would think they would be better choice for us right now.
I seem to agree with that.
So, I would, uh, I would make a motion that we select the Wooton Company as our CDVG scattered sites, scattered site, uh, housing grant administrator.
I've been very pleased with them so far.
We, we have a motion on the floor to accept the proposal from the Wooton Company. We have a second.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign.
Okay.
All right, the Wooton Company will be the Grand Administrator for the CDVG Scattered Housing Site for this year.
And last thing for CDVG, last thing for me for the night. Um, the county needs to pass a resolution designating four individuals who will sign, who will be authorized to sign the requisition funds from the state. Um, additionally, the county must also accept our funding approval from Community Investment Assistance. Uh, the resolution that you should have in front of you authorizes the county manager, finance officer, chairman of the Board of Commissioners, or vice chairman of the Board of Commissioners as the four signatories.
Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion that we approve a resolution for the designated, uh, signers of, uh, funding requests from the scattered site housing grant.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign.
Okay, thank you all very much.
Thank you, Morgan.
My other question.
Sir.
On the, uh, scattered site housing, have we made the four selections, or, now, we've determined that we wanted three replacements?
And one-
And we're gonna use the leftovers to do repairs?
Yes, sir.
All right, have we made a determination on who those three are?
Yes, sir.
I would like to see those names.
I will email those names to you first thing in the morning.
Morgan, you had one more thing listed here, on the zoning ordinance regarding lawn care.
Oh, I apologize, I about forgot. Um, this time of year, people always wonder, well, can I make my neighbor cut their grass? There's nothing in our zoning ordinance or junkyard ordinance about forcing people to cut their grass. Um, so I just wanted to make you aware and address that issue. It has been some concern, usually it is this time of year, and just wanted to make you aware, that's where we stand.
Uh, so you do have a proposal to put something in there.
No one has-
Camden County, I think it's Camden or Camden County that has a grass-cutting ordinance.
I believe it was, um, twelve inches.
Yeah.
The town of Hoski has one in place.
So, I just wanted to make you all aware.
And has had for years.
Morgan, they got something in, in an envelope, it's, that's this.
It's in the pack that you gave me.
Is that something that I believe needs to be talked about?
Scatter, scattered site rehab.
North Carolina Department of Commerce, Community Investment Assistance, CDVG.
The funding is, oh, sorry, I just forgot about that, sorry everyone. Um, this is a funding approval that comes from Community Investment. It's four hundred thousand dollars, that is the funding agreement. Um, saving out some-
The resolution was this.
The resolution was this, and you have to approve this.
We just need to approve the resolution?
You, you just need to approve the funding, of four hundred thousand dollars.
You have to sign this.
Okay. To grow, to block that grant, scatter site rehab, or anything.
Just the formality.
The formality side.
Mr. Chapel, you need a motion on that?
Yeah, we need a motion to approve the chairman to sign the documents for the CDGB. Um, scattered site rehabilitation grant agreement.
Mr. Chairman, as a, as a, I make a motion that we give approval to sign that document pertaining to, uh, the CDVG grant administration, giving you authority to sign.
All right, we got a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Morgan. All right, next on our agenda, we're going into old business, unless anybody wants to take a break. Don't mind jumping up at it, we'll go ahead and move to old business. Um, Commissioner Hor, I mean, Commissioner Jordan, I'm sorry, uh, proposed courthouse renovation.
Yeah, let's take a break.
All right, let's take a break then. All right, uh, next on the agenda, Mr., Commissioner Jordan with, uh, talk about the proposed courthouse renovation.
All right, now, Mr. Chairman, we have before us the historical courthouse. We have to make a decision on how we're gonna move forward. If we don't do anything, we're gonna have an eyesore and a potential liability for the county. It has been the desire of many of the citizens that we do do something to try to restore this historic property. And we have contacted Clearscapes, they've given us a proposal on what it would take to move forward in doing the assessment of, uh, of all this involved in restoring a courthouse. And I, I would recommend that the board establish a plan of action. Uh, first of all, I would recommend that we authorize the county manager to contact Clearscape architects and authorize them to move forward in the phase one part of their proposal, which would fully assess the condition of the old courthouse. Now, this proposal, uh, has been estimated at thirty-three thousand dollars. And, uh, there are grants out there that can address part of this problem, I mean, this, these funds. Clearscapes themselves, in the letter that they just sent to us, uh, said they have identified funds to offset some of the costs. And I believe that we have a potential, uh, of utilizing some existing funds, uh, within our county budget to address this if need be. But the point is, is that we cannot just sit by and allow this courthouse to become an eyesore and a liability. So, I would recommend that we also assemble a committee of citizens from various districts of the county, uh, to provide information and direction on how we're gonna use the courthouse, once it's restored, and provide information to the, uh, to the architects. Also, once we get the phase one in, we would need to move to phase two. And once we get phase two completed, we would need to make a decision on whether or not we're gonna spend the money to have this, the historic courthouse refurbished. Now, I would also, uh, recommend that, uh, if we intend to borrow the money to do this, along with other grants and, and citizen participation or whatever, that we would make a voter referendum, allow the citizens of the county, uh, to vote whether or not they would want to move forward in spending the money on restoring the courthouse. It could involve, uh, a half a cent tax increase, one cent tax increase, or whatever. Uh, but we could do it through a bond referendum, or how we want to finance it. So, but this gives us a plan of action on moving forward, and I think we need to adopt this tonight. Uh, give the authorization to the county manager, so that he can contact Clearscapes and, and, uh, procure their services to start the phase one. And also to have our clerk to advertise in the paper, with assistance of, uh, Cal, uh, for committee members to serve on the old historic courthouse, uh, committee. Thank you.
All right, are you making, are you gonna make this as a motion, or you're just starting as, as a conversation?
I'll make an emotion if you want to, I'll, I'll make that motion.
Let's, let's do the conversation first, see if we can go that way. Gentlemen, y'all have anything to converse about this? Any questions, or any statements to make on it?
Well, I think the sentiment of the, uh, citizens is to, uh, is to restore the courthouse. Um, on the application to be on, or the, uh, offer for people to serve on the committee, I'd like to see that done exactly the way we're doing on our current, um, request to be on a committee by application. And if we could put something like that on the website, where it could be filled out there, that would be helpful. But, um, Henry's put together a good proposal, and, uh, I can stand behind what I see here.
Anything else?
Well, I agree with most of what's on here. Obviously, I think we don't need to make the same mistakes that we made with the library. People, the citizens need to be included in the decision-making process. And as Jack said, I think the sentiment, well, I think that too, but I don't know it. And I think that what we need to do is develop a survey document that goes out to the citizens of Gates County, registered voters of Gates County. Could be included in the water bill or whatever, with probably ten yes, no answers, and a comment section. First off, how much money do you think it should be restored? You think it should be torn down? You think it should be turned over to someone else? Would you support a certain tax increase to revitalize that? Take those documents, build out a consensus, then establish a committee to work on the desires of the citizens of Gates County. And then develop a one-term, a proposal that we could vote on to do this. There are a lot of things that are available, just like these historical tax credits, depending on how you handle it, and the amount of money. Another thing is deciding really what it should be used for. Obviously, I was in disagreement, and I thought the courthouse should, could be reestablished, just like it was in Jackson County, North Carolina, to a nice library that was in our state magazine, and in several of those. Could be done, should have been done, but that's hindsight. But the people need to be included. Whether that starts with an initial survey, and I think that is the approach to do. Take those and now accumulate them in the database, see where the consensus is. Mr. Pierce made a good recommendation, that is possible, with an old federal-style building like that. Because I would hate to see it torn down. But regardless, the citizens need to be included in the decision-making process. They're the ones that gotta pay for it. They're the ones that gotta look after it. And just because, and when we restore it, then we gotta keep it up. We can't just ignore it. And we don't need to make the same mistake again. And so, I think we do the thirty-three thousand, I think it's very important that we understand what we're getting into first, and you got to spend that money upfront. And as the letter states, the initial cost, there are grants out there for people that, that will pay for that to allow you to do that. There are a lot of, uh, and I'll get tongue-tied, uh, saying this, some of those people that philanthropist, uh, whatever, and I can't get it out exactly right, that enjoy doing this kind of stuff, but you had to make a case to them. One cat up in Washington DC, and, uh, has done a lot of this. Now, I don't mean he's gonna pay for the whole thing, but he will shuck out a lot of change. Why? Because it's advantageous to him. A lot of these people, when they give money away, guess who really pays for that money that they give away? You, the taxpayer. If he's in the right tax bracket, the federal government gives him thirty-five percent of that money back. If he's in the state of North Carolina, the state of North Carolina gives him nine percent back. But he's got to owe taxes. So, how do you owe taxes? You have to be making money, or you got plenty of money. There are a lot of people that are, that are fortunate people that will give money away for you to do projects. All you gotta do is hang a little shingle on the side of the building. That's all they ask. But they do it because they are taxed advantages to that. Then along with that, you got the historical tax credits, that's why corporations do this. That's the only reason. And they charge a small amount of money to do that, like ten percent of what the initial thing is. And we have to be proactive, but we got to do the first step first. And then we need to know whether the citizens really want to do this. And what Henry's got here is, I mean, is the right direction. But we do need to know what our citizens want. We don't need to go through the same fiasco that we've been through. Again, it has to be a collective decision, county commissioners and citizens, not five people, or three people.
All right, what's, what's the pleasure of order on this proposal from the vice chair?
Well, I, I made the mo, I made the motion.
All right, we've got a motion on the floor to-
Second.
We got a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign.
Can you clarify what the motion was?
I had a question before you took that motion. I wanted to know if you were gonna open it up to the people.
I was working on the motion, we will, I'll open it to people, comments will go-
You just wrote it on something that-
I'll rescind my second.
Well, we need to do a little different if we're gonna do this. You need to make a motion that we rescind the vote.
I'll make a motion, we rescind the vote until we get some public comment.
Okay, we got a motion on the floor to rescind the vote. Do we have a second?
I'll second it, but I, the one that makes the motion has to agree to rescind it. But I agree to rescind it to allow public comment.
I'll second that.
All right, all in favor to say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. All right, we're gonna have some public comment. If you want to be, Dan, you there.
My name is Dan Bazemore, and I'm from the Hall of Township, and most of you know me. And, uh, I like some of the beverages that you used in saying the citizens have been giving you feedback on the decision that you were gonna make in reference to this courthouse. Now, I sat in here at a meeting that was conducted by a gentleman that came here and gave you a presentation. That presentation consisted of two ways of receiving funds. One was how you could get funds to take care of the whole financing of it. And he stated something to the effect that you had to make it income-producing to the tune of two hundred and fifty thousand plus dollars a year to receive the type of funds that you want to put in on that courthouse so that the taxpayers of Gates County wouldn't be hit with a tax burden. Which we know that any time that we do something and we spend money, that that's just a noun figure because soon as it's done, we're gonna continue to have upkeep. We're gonna have expenses that is gonna continue for the duration of that building. So just to say three or three and a half million dollars was the number that was used as a tentative number, not as a precise number, that was used at that date. Now, the other was that if you didn't produce the two hundred and fifty-plus thousand dollars per year of income from that, then yes, there's a possibility of having some grants available. The gentleman made a presentation sitting right there. And he made the comment that a two-dollar fee to visit the courthouse is not gonna produce two hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year unless you have an an overabundance of people that we are not used to having coming to Gates County to generate the two point, two hundred and fifty thousand plus dollars. So then, we turn around and he said, "Well, you can get some possible funds that the county pays so much and you get this grant that you have to match a certain dollar figure." Now, when we went on with this library, there was a lot of information that could have been given to us that we felt as though were not given to us in a timely manner. It was put out as a way of saying, "Well, we can't say this and we can't say that." Gentlemen, you've got a mouth and a voice, just like I have. You can say. And the only reasoning you don't say is because the people feel as though if you hide it behind the door, keep the people quiet, we're gonna push it on them anyhow. We don't need that attitude anymore. All right, so now, Mr. Jordan, I commend you for making the comment. Mr. Hor, I commend you for making the comment. Voter referendum. How would you get the majority of the people feedback to you? This is an election year, which is for the President of the United States and a number of key political offices. That is when you have your larger turnout, is it not? On the off-year, you don't have as many people turning out. So this is the prime time, is the November election, to have it on a voter referendum. One, you will get more people voting on it because you don't have as many people in the water bill concept, the property owners, there's more people that vote than there is that own property. Would you not say that's true? Such as in my household, I own a piece of land, my wife has got a boat also, it hasn't shifted. But we receive one water bill. Got a son next door to me, he's got two children. And him and his wife, they receive one water bill. But if all of those people are of age to vote, then you get a bigger number, a larger number, with a voter referendum, which means you get more feedback from the majority of the people through a voter referendum than you would the alternate that was recommended. However, the alternate is still a good idea and better than none. We went through this before, come up with a, a recommendation for voter referendum. Many of you said, as a matter of fact, the majority of you said you were not against a voter referendum. But when it come time to vote for it, how did you vote? You didn't vote for it. And so, I personally talked to some of you, and you told me, "Well, I changed my mind." Well, you're entitled to change your mind. But maybe the best thing to do is not even say, "Well, I agree with it," and then vote, not vote for it. Just keep it to yourself, vote the way you want to to start with, and it don't make it look so bad. So we don't need to go through the same thing we did, dragging it out, dragging it out, dragging it out. Keep in mind, people, this is not a one-time investment. If you've got a hundred people that want a place restored at three point some million dollars, keep in mind, you will not live to see it paid for. Your children and your grandchildren are gonna be obligated to pay this bill if they finance it for fifteen or more years because many of us will not be here then. So we will not be paying that bill until the time of our demise. So what are we leaving? Our children, our grandchildren, our ancestors, and the fellow people here in Gates County. Thank you.
Anybody else would like me to comment? Hey, Dan.
I think before any vote is taken, we need to know what the assessor looking at it will come across. Now, I love history. I love historical buildings. And think, and back of my mind, what to do with it would be a museum. But first, we need to know what it will cost us to restore it.
Thank you, Dan. Earl, you coming up too? Sandra. Sandra, you wanna come?
No, go ahead. Go ahead, I was just wandering my way up here.
Sandra? Yeah, I do.
Gentlemen, I, I, I really appreciate y'all tonight. Y'all are really swinging. I am not quite sure, and I missed the, the latest, the last meetings, and I'm gonna try to be more, uh, present. But I'm always, uh, day late and hour short. But, but just among yourselves, tell me the significance that you feel that the library would be and, and the impact on the, as far as the, uh, us as consumers or citizens is, you know, we, we got this big, beautiful library coming up and, and it seemed like it may have just added expense. So, I, I agree with, um, the, you, you presented it to the, uh, citizens during the time that we vote for a president. But, but I just wanna know, uh, the significance. Did someone tell you that, that we needed to have it as a museum or archives or so forth and so on? The significance. 'Cause see, I'm only sixty-four years old, so I don't know the history. I didn't read it in the books. Okay? And I'm not trying to be facetious. 'Cause I go, I go, once you, once you say that, I think that would be, uh, appropriate. Okay?
Earl, you got something?
Yep.
Can, can you help?
I really, Henry and I have not talked in quite some time. I talked about him. And, uh, one of the man, people that I was talking to, Henry, in his house, we were there to do business, but then we had politics. And he said, "Henry Jordan is a very intelligent man." So we talked about you. We didn't talk about what you said. And I was gonna say this at some point in time. I think the voter referendum to me is the only way to go. And Jack, you're the last person in the world I won't upset. I sat out in Jack's driveway an hour the other day, with temperature a hundred. I said, "I'm gonna catch him today." And we had a glass of lemonade. But you said you thought that the people would support fixing the courthouse. But I remember very well, and I know exactly the spot that Jack Owens was saying, standing, when he said eighty percent of the people in this county wanted us to build a library. And I think if you know anything about politics, know anything about election returns, I don't think Ja, Jack, eighty percent of the people in this county wanted to build. Now, I'm one hundred percent, because I'm a historian person, we got to do something with the courthouse. But before, I'm like Henry said, and I back up Jack, let me real quickly tell y'all some history, 'cause y'all might not know this history. And I don't know when it was, because I can't figure it out on the computer. But see, back several years ago, every building of, bought money that the county borrowed had to go before the voters. Well, some genius up, I need to put that thing up. Some genius up there in Raleigh, in the General Assembly, probably backed by the County Commissioners Association, decided to let us borrow money without a voter referendum. And that was not really for the taxpayers, a real smart thing to do. But when the county wanted something, never in this county, I think if you search, did this county ever turn down a bond referendum for the schools? And I'm old enough, and that's old, to know when every school that we have now was built, I knew when every one of them were voted on. The people, when they see a need or see something they want, they'll vote for it. But Henry, when you said that today, I said, "I thought I called Henry." Was thinking about calling you, and then I said, "I know I didn't talk to Henry today." But I agree with you on that one hundred percent. Because this is what gets us in trouble. Five people making a decision, and then it's been done. Well, you come back and y'all get, two years later, you get defeated. But we're still stuck with this three and a half million-dollar debt that y'all gave us. So Jack, you understand where I'm coming from? I sort of like to have a little input now. But what, part of the reason I wanna come up here right quick, and didn't have anything to do with that, Kathy Malaspino put a thing in on her webpage, and I think Kathy, it might have been about Thursday. And it was one hundred percent true. But the reason I bring it up was a friend of mine called me earlier this morning and kinda making a joke with me about the Family Dollar Store. And wanting to know, said, "Well, I didn't ever see your picture in the paper." Well, I didn't realize at that time that Johnny Horr had made some comment, but that's, by the way. But I did, Kathy wrote that the store was a mess. And several other people on Facebooks wrote it was a mess. Well, let me tell you real quickly a couple of things. Number one is Family Dollar Store is a seven point eight eight billion-dollar business. They know how to run a business. Their profits run, uh, I can't say exactly what the profits are. The sales are a little over a billion dollars a year. Their capitalization, meaning how much they're worth, is seven point eight eight million dollars. And this morning, the stock opened up, up two dollars and thirty-nine cents, but it lost it during the day, so I didn't have no money tonight. But the point I wanted to make, it has nothing to do with your commissioners exactly. It just has to do with everybody here. I talked to management, and they says, "Y'all got a problem in Sunbury?" I said, "It's on Facebook." I said, "I saw it, so I went to the store, and it's a mess." He promised me that it was gonna be straightened out by Wednesday. But really, seriously, it's an asset to the county. I knew, I mean, it's, we get sales tax, it's gonna employ some people. It looks good. And Henry and I can go out there and pick up stuff real quick that we need. But if you've got a problem with it, just let me know. 'Cause I, got, the guy gave me to say his cellphone number. He said, "Call me if it's three o'clock in the morning." Because, said, "We don't want any problems in Sunbury and nowhere else." But Kathy, you were right, and I hope that everything's gonna work out. But Henry, you, you did a good thing, and I agree with everything you said. And you maybe got that on record, because that might be the only time that happens.
All right, thank you, Earl.
All right, any other comments about the old library and proposal? All right, commissioners, do y'all have anything else you'd like to add, or do you want the motion to make?
I'll address what Mr. Bazemore said. And, Mr. Bazemore, I agree with what you were talking about, as far as the number of people. And, uh, that would be my intent. But I think an initial survey is a way to get a judge a starting base as to what you would want on the referendum, from the feedback you come. And I recognize the fact that you are not, obviously, to the voters of the people that are actually paying the taxes, and you do want, do not want to change the disproportionate sense of the voter referendum. And I think that's the wisest thing to do. I think most any county, especially as a magnitude and the ratio of debt to, to, uh, capital, assets, that they should be on this course. It's, uh, it's just the right thing to do. It's, it's a privilege to be a county commissioner. And I appreciate you voting for me and putting me in this place. And I have done my best to make changes and to show a financial responsibility and direction. That is my training. I've been trained in that, and I guarantee you, there's not a soul in this room that has any more financial expertise than that than I do. I know none of these guys do, not a one. I know the magnitude of the money that I manage. Eighty million dollars. International Paper is a big corporation. They don't let you do things, and you continue to do them if you don't do them well. They don't operate that way. They don't put up with malfeasance. None. That's an important trait. Due diligence. You know, just recently, Andy Griffin You know, just recently, Andy Griffin passed away. But I challenge any of you to go back and look at Barney Fife, and what Barney said to Andy with malfeasance. Go look it up in a dictionary. It's a shame, but we do need citizens' input. It is your money. I represent you. And I told you people when I, in my, in the paper, that you are my boss, and I respect that. Everyone has a boss. I've had a boss all my life. I've only had one bad one. But you had to learn how to manage your boss. If you don't know how to do that, you're not going anywhere. Well, I know how to do that. And it is a shame that we have processed this. And I, I don't know what's gonna happen, but I know what Mr. Bazemore said is true. It is a fact. I do my analysis. I get out and I dig in the books. I look in the statistics. And I appreciate what Mr. Jordan said. I don't want to hash old wounds, but I'm telling you, the numbers were not there. Only seven percent. And I can go back and show you that is a fact. That's what happened.
Johnny, Johnny, can we keep not rehash old wounds that you don't want to rehash?
I don't want to. We're talking about the courthouse.
No, we weren't, we're talking about Johnny Horr right now, so let's, let's move on.
Why are we talking about him, Mr. Chairman?
You've been saying, telling what you've been doing, what you do, and how often you've done it, so let's move on.
All right, we're moving on. I'm telling you, do not ignore the facts, the statistics, of what Mr. Bazemore was addressing there. We cannot continue on this path. We have to do it collectively with citizens. That's the only way I preach. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to go back to my initial motion. I would like to clarify for Mr. Bazemore and all the public that the initial cost that we're talking about does not involve a tax increase. It does not involve monies that we're gonna ask the citizens to pay, other than what we budgeted for this year. So, but if we are gonna have costs that involves additional funds to the, to the citizens, my recommendation is, let's do a referendum. But first of all, we have to move forward in getting Phase One. We have to see, we have to see what, what is needed. Even if, if it's the decision of the, uh, historic courthouse committee to say, well, let's sell it. Let's do what we did at Sunbury School. You still need to know what's involved, in order to be able to put it out there. So, Phase One is something that we need to move forward in. And if we can get this, uh, we can move forward in the other parts of it. So, Mr. Chairman, I'm prepared again to make the motion that we move forward in the course of action and authorize the county manager to have clear scape, give us Phase One, and also to put together a committee to determine the end use for the historic courthouse and what we're gonna do with it.
Okay, we've got a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
No motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Before we initiate the committee, I would request that Mr. Jordan and myself, myself jointly draft a survey concerning this issue to be sent out to the, to the water customers billing, to get a collective database so we could accumulate data, to find out the direction that we need, before we address any committee.
I have a problem with Commissioner Jordan.
Well, you know, we could talk about it. I, we would need to discuss it. I mean, a survey is something we've talked about in the past. Uh, but the survey has to be constructed where it's not overburdened to the citizens. You know, in order to explain something like this, it may involve two pages. Most people don't, most of our citizens don't want two pages to read. You want it short, you want it clear and concise, and just tell me what it is you want. And, uh, you know, that would be, could be addressed in a voter referendum. Uh, I think the argument has been made, you know, we as a county, do we want to see the courthouse, uh, standing as it is, continue to be, uh, deteriorate? Do we want it to be an eyesore? What do we want to do with it? This is the thing. And this, and so, you know, obviously, we've got to do something with it. And, uh, you know, if you do something with it, it's gonna take time, it's gonna take some funds. So, you know, that decision is there. But when it comes to spending the funds to do it, then it's another story. That's when you're gonna have to say, well, you know, I'm not willing to spend three million dollars to do this, but I need to know what I've gotta do.
Mr. Jordan.
Yes.
Would you agree, ten, fifteen, twenty questions, yes, no, A, B, C, D, E, F?
Well, I say we have to construct something and see how it's presented. I mean, you know, I, I have no problem with that.
And that's all I'm saying, is ten, fifteen, twenty questions, yes, no, A, B, C, D. Not a lot of reading, no background, just questions.
One thing I'd like to request for y'all, if y'all continue to talk about the referendum for November, to make sure that you make a legal referendum that has to go through the legislature and be approved before you can put it on the ballot. Of not, a referendum is something, just write it up and put it on the ballot. It has, there is a process, and you have to have a, a, the only referendum will be for bond or increased tax. That's the way it's written up, that's the, the, the way it is. So, make sure when we talk about referendum, we understand the legalities of that referendum.
Mr. Chairman, there would be nothing about a referendum that says just yes, no surveys.
I understand that, but we're talking, we, we've had several people talk about a referendum for November.
That comes after the fact.
Well, you're gonna have to, the thing about it is, as citizens, you elect these commissioners to make decisions. You elect decisions, the commissioners make decisions. If, if, if the commissioners are not making the right decisions, then you don't reelect them.
That's right.
Now, we're trying to make the best decisions that we know. And if we put a survey out there, and the survey comes back and says, don't do anything, so what do we do?
Let it fall.
Let it fall. Oh, so, so we'll just let it fall.
Well, you still have the right, excuse me, I'm interrupting, but you still have the right to overrule the people, even though you've got a survey, but you've got to worry about it when it comes to elected town.
That's right.
I agree with...
The thing about it is, the commissioners are gonna have to make a decision regardless.
That's correct.
Because if the citizen says no, then you're gonna have to make a decision, what am I gonna do? Exactly. And most citizens...
Either not do it, like they say, or either you pursue and go ahead and do it, and give it on us until we pay the burden.
And, and then you have a complaint that you do.
You don't have two choices, one choice. Either give correction or you chair it down.
That's right.
Because it's something a liability, if you let it stay like that. And that's more of a burden than it's worth to make a decision.
All right, gentlemen, we, uh, we, we...
I think, I think, excuse me, if I may, I think enough they said tonight, with different one they have spoken, and I really appreciate everything everybody's saying. Look, Bazemore here, I think if we would just stop and look at what some things he said. He brought out some good points that I think that we are not looking at. And I think on a whole, if we would look at what he said and what Mr. Horr said, I think we can get a lot of things going. But what happened, we are not listening to each other. We're talking, but nobody's listening. And I think listening needs to take place. Thank you.
Okay, now let's move on. We've had a vote, and, uh, we're gonna move forward with this. The next thing on our agenda is new business. Jeff, you still here?
Still here.
Thank you for hanging on.
You didn't have to put that coat on.
Good evening, gentlemen.
I wish you had.
Um, what I bring before you now is, um, the Home Care Community Care, the Home Community Care Block Grant, the contracts that is needed to be signed by the chairman of the commissioners, allocate the county ma- match to the services that they provide to the citizens in our county. This is already budgeted for this upcoming year. Some of the services that are provided, um, just a brief overview, there's in-home living aids that are provided to, to individuals in the county, so they can remain in their homes instead of going into assisted living facilities that would be a greater cost than what we're putting in right now. Um, other, other services, small home repairs, some of the things they do here is that they build ramps, make sure that their home stays accessible, so they can stay in them as well. They also contribute to transportation and medical transportation for needed appointments. And also, they make home-delivered meals and congenial meals. So, that's what I bring before you now, if you have any other questions. I'd like to point out Miss Lauren Alvarico from the Home Care Community Block, well, Alvaro Commission, who administers this grant, has been here as well. So, if there's any more questions that you have, I'd be happy to try and answer them. If not, I would be willing to help me out.
How much, uh, is this grant worth? Is it, is it bigger on it?
The total cost to the county would be sixteen thousand three hundred eighty-one dollars. Um, and that is a ten percent match, so you're looking at, am I right? Hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars and one hundred and sixty-three thousand eight hundred and ten dollars. So, if my math is right.
All right, so we need to, to act on this agreement, is that right?
Yes.
Any other questions for Jeff? If not, entertain a motion to, uh, well, you just need to act on signatures for it. Okay, I need, uh, authorization for the chairman to sign the last page of this agreement.
Say move.
Have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign.
And also, the contracts that were signed, they were, they were originals, um, that I sent over would also need to be signed. Okay, because they'll have to be sent back to the Alvaro Commission.
All right.
Okay?
Thanks, Jeff.
Thank you.
Next on our agenda, we need to appoint a new member to the EIC board. Mr. Abram Saunders has indicated that he was not going to be wanting to serve again. Um, we have one application that I understand here, a Mr. Robert Williams, uh, for this board. So, we need to, a motion to open nominations for appointment to the board of EIC.
I make a motion that...
Go ahead.
That we accept nominations.
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign.
I'd like to nominate Mr. Robert E. Williams to said position.
All right, we've got a nomination for Mr. Robert Williams. Do we have any other nominations for the EIC board? If not, we'll entertain a motion to close nominations.
Say move.
Say it.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. All right, now, we need to, we've got a nomination for Mr. Robert Williams Senior to fill a vacancy on the Economic Improvement Council. Uh, do we have a motion to accept Mr. Williams in that position?
Say move.
Second.
Motion is a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Robert. All right, next one here, I've got to recognize Ms. Morgan Jethro for the Certified Flood Plane Manager. All right, we've got, I've got a letter here from the North Carolina Association of State Flood Plane Managers. Uh, this is to the county manager. "We are pleased to inform you that one of your staff, uh, Mel Morgan Jethro, has successfully completed the process of examination to become Certified Flood Planes Manager. The North Carolina Association of Flood Plane Managers grants this certification only to those professionals who meet the requirements and complete the comprehensive examination on the programs and standards to reduce flood losses in North Carolina and the nation. More information about the, um, Flood Plane Program is easily accessible on our website. Uh, this, the goals of this program are to formalize and procedure to recognize and provide an incentive for individuals to improve their knowledge of flood plane management concepts, enhance individual professional development goals, promote the understanding of relevant subject matters that consistent with nationwide, convey new concepts and practices, and build partnerships among organizations and agencies that share the same goals. The North Carolina Certified Flood Plane Manager Program provides a formal measurable mechanism for training and development sound flood plane management concepts, practices, and those persons who make the recommendations and decisions that guide development and mitigation activities. This certification recognizes their continuing education and professional development. We know you will want to work with Morgan to maintain their CFM status. We urge you to recognize and support this important professional step by your staff member. This is, uh, feel free to contact with me any questions. Sincerely, William R. Tingle, the Executive Director." Morgan, congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. If we weren't done that, we weren't done. Next thing, we've got citizens' comments. Do we have any more citizens' comments for the evening? All right, I've got one name here, is, uh, Mr. Thomas Hill. Welcome back, Thomas.
Yes, sir, thank you. Um, before, when I was speaking to you all about past issues, not only was I interrupted, uh, on the issue that I was presenting, which I also took time in researching, but you, sir, Mr. Twine, not only interrupted the presentation, but you said that me and Mr. Pierce will no longer be able to give presentations in the future. When, sir, I'm not finished yet, if I may.
Okay.
When after I made partial presentation to this, okay? You said that we would no longer be invited to bring out these issues in the future. Now, you, sir, read personally a letter from someone who was not even here. I'm present, I'm a taxpayer, and I'm a resident of Gates County, in Mr. Jordan's district. Now, if I cannot speak to my representative, who am I to speak with? Now, you gentlemen are Democrats. What happens if all five of you were voted off, and there was five Republicans? Would you, sir, want to speak to a Republican council? I would ask that this council lawmakers would be very careful in silencing the First Amendment with the, with the taxpaying citizens. That's all I have to say. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, Thomas. Appreciate your comments. All right, Thomas likes it?
Good afternoon. First time, I didn't say anything, but good afternoon. Um, here, this is July, I think it was June, May. I've written a letter to all five of the county commissioners. And to this day, three of them, I have not received any response from at all. What do I have to do in order to get a response from the county commissioners? I'm like everybody else, I'm a taxpaying, law-abiding citizen. So, what do I need to do to get a response?
I'm not gonna respond to your letter, I can tell you that right now. If that's the answer I've given you, I'm not responding to it.
You leave a knowledge that you received the letter.
Hmm, only that I didn't, I probably didn't.
No, you didn't.
I'm not responding to it. That's, that's, that's my answer now.
What's the answer from the other two, then?
I'm not responding either.
Uh, Mr. Jack?
Uh, it, it's a personnel matter. I, I did talk to you about that a previous time. And I told you I couldn't respond on a personnel matter, because that's, that's not the right protocol.
There's a such thing as people doing what they're supposed to do towards any person, whether the personnel man or not a personnel man, is a certain way to address certain things. And I don't think anybody will get offended behind dressing things like it should be addressed. You also will be representing us, whether we like it or not. And we are taxpaying citizens, regardless who we are. And why can't we get some type of, uh, consent from whatever? Uh, anyway, I appreciate you, Mr. Johnny Horr. You are really a good person in this county that we need. We need people like him, because he will respond in knowledge that he have received what he's supposed to receive. And to you, Mr. Jack, I'm not surprised at you, because I've seen two sides of you play the role. And to each other, you are the same, identical way. Graham, I'm surprised at you too.
You surprised me a lot, Thomas, myself. Thank you, sir, I appreciate your comments.
Yes, sir. Have a great one.
All right, now, that's the end of our citizens' comments. The last thing on our general commissioner comments. Oh, I thought you were commenting a while ago. Would you like to comment again, Earl?
Well, I didn't know what, that was, that was a comment on comment.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm not, I'm not even going up there.
Okay.
I was in Cameron, don't make me, I don't want to deal with the cameras. But I, I guess, I know you know a lot about it, and you told me, I guess, his research this thing. And there was a news article in the Daily, I mean, I didn't, I hear it was earlier last week, I believe, that some kind of idiot, I deleted it, can't get it back. But some town was gonna do the voter referendum like we're talking about? And what I understood from that article was that you sent it back going to the General Assembly. And what these people had to do was to get a petition with X number of registered voters in the county, or the number of voters that voted in the last election. And I, I don't, I can get that information, and totally can get it, but do you have any idea, Tony, what I'm talking about? That do you know that we have to go to the General Assembly?
I have an idea, but I'm not gonna speculate and just go off the cuff on something that's technical.
Right. But anyway, I don't, I just particular thing, and I wanted to say this because, and I know Henry was gonna bring this up, because I'd already been told, they said, "Well, you know, they're not gonna listen to you." And I said, "Well, that's probably true." But anyway, I don't, I'm not sure we got, what I'm asking or saying is two things. Number one is, let's find out exactly what we have to do to put it on voter referendum. I'll be number one or two, whichever way you wanna look at it. And the other thing is, let us don't have any risk look at transparency. Linda Hoffler ran her campaigns, she told me, and that was one of her things, is let's let the public know exactly, if we can, what we're talking about. We don't want the Republicans to think that we're moving on a million dollars and then find out later that it was two billion dollars. So I just ask y'all, if you do go with the referendum, which I support, let's make it perfectly clear and be honest about this thing. Let's don't go out here and try to sell something here, sell a used car or a bad engine in it. Thank you.
Thanks, Earl.
Earl, I'll address one of the points you said, and I might be wrong, and I've read this some time ago, but it's my understanding that you can go to your representative of your district, and they can interject that on the House of Representatives floor for a voter referendum. And if it passes, you can do most anything you want to. And I might be wrong, I will find out, though.
Earl, I don't know, I'm not an attorney. The attorneys told us what they told us before. There are general statutes about what you can referendum. And it has to do with the way it's worded, the taxes. You can't just basically have a referendum, say, "Can we do the old courthouse?" That, that is part of the general statutes that, that we have read, and we've had three or four attorneys actually come here and say that. Nobody's listened to them, but everybody said it. But there are legalities along with a referendum. People don't listen to them, but there are legalities.
That was the point, don't want that I was making up.
To make sure it's legal. That's what I was saying. I don't have a problem, let's make sure it's legal.
Exactly. If you have, I'm, I'm just thinking, and we're just thinking, we have to look at it, and those can sit down and look at it a lot easier than me, but two ways to do one thing. And one way might be to go to the General Assembly, which we know we can do, and you already said that Johnny agrees with it. And the other one is what I read in the newspaper, just panel, and that's to get X number of senior to it.
Well, it has to do with the way the referendum is worded, and actually, basically on financing, mostly what I, the way I've read it.
And you're right, it's not, it's got to be on taxes. My thought, if we didn't have the own taxes, we'd have a ballot of hundreds of-
Well, it's kind, it's kinda hard to have a referendum on what something will cost until you know what it's gonna cost to do it. All right, Commissioners, Ken, you got anything to say?
Nothing.
Jack? Johnny?
I appreciate all of those people being here tonight, and especially all of the ones that stayed around. Been very interesting. It has come to time that we start making some other decisions. I look at in the audience tonight, I've been to several of the Board of Education meetings in the last couple of months, working on something with them that is a very positive return for Gates County. Unfortunately, it's not a great return for Piedmont gas. So it is important. And I sat in those meetings, and I'm amazed at the number of people that come to those meetings. All of those are night meetings, all of them. But yet, we're told in county commissioners that we need to be here because the employees work during the day and it's more convenient for them. And I grant you, a lot of those people at those Board of Education meetings work for the school system. So it's time that we start having these meetings at nighttime so that the majority of people can come and start looking at these things and seeing what's going on. As I said, I'm up here to represent you. I have my own personal ideas and opinions, but yours are extremely important to me. My success, everything I've ever done, came from the people that were underneath me and helped me get there. I need people to get to my next step. And you had to recognize that. People help you go. You can be smartest guy, anything in the world, but if you don't have people that like you and do things for you and help you get there, you're not gonna be successful. You're not. It's just, it's just a fact of life. You can go out on the golf course and play ball with somebody and be his best buddy and everything, but you drop the ball a few times and make him look bad, see how, how he's gonna treat you. You don't get there. You don't. I enjoy being successful. I want to be successful. Competition helps you get better. It makes you better. It pushes you. Everybody needs to be pushed. We got a lot of things going on, but tonight's been a very exciting meeting for me. And I hope it has for you. It tells you things. Look at them, digest them, run them in your head, think about them. There's a lot of other important ones coming up real soon. Know your people. Know the way they think. Know what they're about and where they wanna go. But I appreciate you folks being here. Thank you, and have a great night.
Henry?
I thank everyone for coming, and those who've stayed, and all the expressions that's been presented to the commissioners. I do remind you that there's a runoff election tomorrow. Many of you probably have already voted, but there was a few candidates that had a runoff, and we need to go out and do, exercise our civic duties. I do want to just mention, a question was presented to us by Mrs. Nickens in regards to the significance of the library. And I take it that that significance was, is it the new library or the old courthouse?
I'm speaking, you know, of the old courthouse.
Right.
And, and what you all felt was the significance of that, that along with, thank you for responding to that.
Well, for me personally, I recognize that the old courthouse is a historic property. It is something that's recognized throughout the nation. And it's also a potential draw for those who may come to visit the county. We have Murchus Mill Pond here. There's a lot of history there. There's a lot of sentiment among many of our citizens for the county, and I respect that. So I think there's, there's quite a bit of significance to it in regards to what many of the citizens feel about it. Not all, I recognize that all citizens don't feel the same way, but there are some that do, and those that do have expressed their feelings, and I think it's significant for the commissioners to move forward in trying to do what they can without putting an undue burden on all of the rest of the citizens that may not want it. So, you know, when you've got historic property, it is valuable, you've gotta do something with it. If you don't do something with it, it becomes an eyesore. It causes your community and city and county not to be what it can be. So that's where we are.
I'd like to thank y'all for being here tonight. On the side of that courthouse, to me, I've got names on the walls up there, my relatives too, and, and they've scratched their name in there. I mean, I understand, the same like Henry, that it costs money to, to do things like that and repair things like that. Well, let me finish. I said, but, and, and answered Dan. Dan said, "What do we leave our children? And what down the line, we may leave them dead?" If our, if our forefathers thought things like that, the courthouse would probably have been gone a hundred years ago, but it wasn't. Now, do we spend money to do it? That's, that's the answer that somebody's gotta come up with other than me. I've got my opinion. I've, Dan's got his opinion, and you've got your opinion. It probably doesn't mean, mean as much to somebody that's not from Gates County as it does for somebody that's here, and their history is here. And that, it is history to me.
I'm proud of you.
And, and that, that's, that's why I feel it.
And I just wanted to know, because, like, you know, I've been out to the Mill Pond and that t-shirt, and people are mad, that costs for business.
Some, some things in life aren't just about making something over, making money on. I, I mean, honestly, they are.
I mean, this is what we're saying, when it comes to business, they spend money.
If, if, if everything was about making money, none of us would go to church on Sunday, I don't expect. So there's, there's a lot of other things involved in, in, in life other than trying to make a living, to make a dollar. And it, it is to me, anyway.
But I don't want, but if y'all want to keep that, I'm gonna go.
We'll see how it goes. Thank you. Y'all have a good night. I need a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign.